Hey, Betsy.
Hello.
Hey, Terry, how are you? Hey, Camila, good to see you.
Hello, nice to see everyone. All right, all right. Hey, Jason.
Hello, hello. Sorry for being a little late.
No worries. It is all good. Are we ready to go, guys? Does anybody need a minute to get anything sorted? Or are we sat? Good? Okay. Well, hi, everybody. I'm going to officially call this meeting to order then at 5:01 PM. This is our August regular meeting. So we'll start with our roll call. Trustee Andrews. So we'll do a roll call. So Terry, can you hear me? Can't hear anything. Hmm, can everybody else hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Is that better, Terry?
It is now, yeah.
There we go. All right, perfect. We should, we should add to our regular agendas. We should add like a tech check at the beginning just to make sure everybody can hear. Part of the perils of Zoom. Okay, so we'll start with a roll call. Trustee Andrews.
Yeah.
Trustee Capel.
You're.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
And I am here as well. So we are full house tonight. Before we get into our business, let's do a quick approval and adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes that they'd like to make to tonight's agenda or anything they'd like to move around? Okay, hearing nothing, then I'd like to ask for a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as it appears in your board packet.
I move that we approve and adopt.
Okay, perfect. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. Motion's been made and seconded. As usual, we'll go through all our votes, turn on action items with a roll call vote. So when you hear your name, just please indicate how you're voting. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's. And that's an I vote for me as well. So the agenda is. Of right now, I have not received any public comments on non-agenda items. Nikki or Natalia, could you guys confirm if that's still the case?
We haven't received any on this then.
Okay, all right. So as always, if anybody has a public comment that they want to make either on YouTube or in in person by phone, the information on how to do that is in the agenda and we will continue to be very flexible with those as we go. So that brings us to our consent calendar, which appears beginning on page three of your board package. So as usual, I'd like to ask for a motion on a second to approve the consent calendar. And then we can take some time to discuss anything that anybody would like to highlight in that. So if I could hear that motion, please.
I move.
So move. It's so tough on Zoom because you can't tell like who's gonna do it. But Terry, I heard you first. You're on this side of my screen clearly. So I heard you first. So if I could ask for a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Betsy. All right, motions been made and seconded. So at this point, is there anything that anybody would like to talk about from the consent calendar? Any of the departmental reports? You'll also see that we have two sets of minutes from our meeting on July 16th, now corrected with Betsy not included because she was not at that meeting, as well as our special meeting on August 3rd. Betsy, it looks like you've got a.
I'm sorry, I forget if this is where we, we get to talk about the stuff.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, I actually, there are a couple of things that I kind of highlighted as I went through. So let me find them. Mostly just kind of amazement and appreciation. I love the thing about the leftover summer reading stuff going to Pasadena Child and Family Services. I thought that was a brilliant idea. I was curious, and I don't know, maybe Nikki, you can clue us in. I noticed Amanda's virtual storytime. And I wondered how that worked. Were the kids actually at the Loma Alta Park place? And Amanda was seeing them online or were the kids all online or? How did that happen? I mean, I just kind of wanted to picture how that works to do a storytime with Tiny Tots on Zoom.
I'm dropping back in. Oh, I'm not real sure. I could find out for you.
I mean, I'm just.
Know that we partnered with parks for the in-person program that we did with the kids that were being, coming to the summer camps. But I'm not sure virtual. What I would assume is that they had to register and get a password and then they'd be in the Zoom room with her.
Yeah, I'm just trying to picture Tiny Tots muting and unmuting themselves or probably not unmuting themselves and or parents trying to figure out how to mute them. I don't know. It just seemed like an interesting attempt and I'm curious. I also wanted to know a little bit more about the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. I'm, I just want to know more about that. This is in Miling's report that she met with Pasadena Public and Sierra Madre Public folks that are giving literacy kits away.
Yeah, Miling just texted me that the kids were at home, parents logged in on Zoom for the toddler storytime.
Oh, thank you, Miling. That's even more virtual that she's texting you and you're telling.
I, I'm wondering if I could have her jump in and talk to you about it because I know she's been working with Jen Driscoll from Pasadena about doing the 100 books before kindergarten.
You know, I, I mean, I don't want to complicate our proceedings right now. Just, I guess, Miling, if you're watching, know that I'm really interested in that. And I, I think that's an incredible idea to try to reach out with literacy stuff to little kids and their families. And so at some point, I guess I would just say at some point, I would like to know more. I was impressed in Carl, in Carlene's report about all the new data that they're going to be using to try to just figure out how people are using the collection. That just, I'm just kind of jealous of that. That just sounds amazing. I wondered when she mentioned that weeded books are sent to Better World Books, does that mean they get sold? Do you get, do you get revenue from that? Or is it just sort of like sending stuff to Goodwill?
Well, it depends on the relationship that you set up with them. When we set up ours and it, the relationship's actually with the friends. Because if there is kind of revenue from selling the books, it would.
Okay, okay.
I believe we, we're just, our relationship is that we don't pay for shipping or anything like that. They give us all the supplies. They do sell them or repurpose the books across the globe, really.
I know, because I buy them. That's, I mean, I'm on the other end as a customer, so I'm just curious how the other end of this.
Like, you'd have to do a lot in sales in order to qualify for even like a really small payment. I know we, we're getting payments in Glendale. And I, we were able to send them a much larger volume. And we'd get like $50 once a year or something. So for me, like when I first got here, we didn't have a really good strategy for disposing of like weeded materials or donations that we weren't selling in the bookstore. So it's been really great. Better World has taken them from us.
Yeah, don't try to put them in the trash can because people will find them and say, oh, my gosh, look what I found. Your lost books.
Well, and so many of them are in wonderful condition. So if we can, like, that's what we want to do.
Fantastic. Just a couple of things. Sorry, there was just so much great stuff in this month's batch of reports. I love the, the mock election thing that they're doing to do at the branch to vote for your favorite book character. I just thought that was fantastic. And I, oh, I know we're going to hear later about their, about the branch's grant proposal about their garden. So I'll wait patiently for that. And lastly, I just appreciated Christopher because so much of stuff that he puts in his report, I find a little bit dense. But I love the part about replacing copper chisels with technology recovered from the Roswell UFO crash. I just appreciated that little touch of humor. Thank you, Christopher.
Somewhere in his report.
It's an Easter egg for the fans.
There we go. I know, I know, now I know.
I also circled that, wondering like, is this, is he being funny or is this serious?
Yeah, it's a super humor.
I had a question about that also, or on that report. Is, it said something about a telescope? Are they gonna be checking out telescopes?
Yeah, so our plan right now is to, I don't even think my headphones are working. Our plan is to expand library of things. So like right now, we kicked it off with computers and the mobile hotspots. Next, we, at some point, acquired a telescope. And the plan was that that was actually going to be what kicked off library of things. So that's next in terms of like getting it calibrated and a system set up so that people can check it out. And then we're also looking at our sewing machines. We've talked about different tools, you know. So we, we're doing a survey right now with the community that's been using curbside and through the website. When one of the, and one of the questions is what kinds of things would you like to see through a library of things? So it's, it's going to grow quite a bit. If you have ideas, please, we're happy to hear them.
Can I just, can you just like reel off a list of the kind of things that are in the libraries of things? I've just never used a library of things. And so I'm just wondering like, what kind of stuff?
Well, it depends on the communities, really. Like, I think the one that I have heard about the most was up in San Francisco and it was like a tool library. You know, it had all kinds of tools, which honestly, buying a new place and having to buy a tool to use once, like, I think it'd be really great to have. And I think that's what should be the motivating factor is like to give people the ability to try something. But before they spend the money on it and own it themselves, or maybe they just check it out one time and they use it. So tools, I've also heard of things like kitchen equipment. You know, maybe it's like the, the accessory for the pasta that you put on your KitchenAid, that maybe you don't want to spend the 80 bucks. You know, it's, it's a little hard right now with kitchen things and COVID, so we're still looking through that. But like, really, it's things that either people can get some exposure to and then potentially buy it on their own if they want to. Or, you know, just check it out once because they only need to use something one time.
Yeah, I think, I think the trick for us is going to be figuring out what would be most exciting for Altadena, right? Because some of the most, some of the best ones I've heard of are so specific to the local community. Like, I think like in Vegas where you came from, Nikki, they have like a whole DJ training thing, right? Because it's Vegas and there's tons of clubs. I know like in Philadelphia, they had literally a full kitchen available for use, like commercial grade kitchen. The other really cool one I've heard of is in Nashville, they have a complete recording studio that the public can, you know, use, right? So there's, and I think Burbank just did a similar thing. So.
Yeah, you just.
A lot of great ideas, for sure.
Ornament would, or not ornaments, instruments are another thing that you could look at. I know Las Vegas is probably most successful library of things is their toy library. So like, the parents can check out a bag of themed toys or something like that. But again, it's a weird time for that kind of stuff in terms of like making sure everything's sanitary and all of that. So. But I mean, we've talked about doing library things from what I understand for several years. So the staff are really excited that we're finally kicking it off and expanding it.
Fantastic. Yeah, other questions or comments or things anybody would like to note?
Yeah, just.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Terry.
Okay.
Sorry, was that you, Jason? You want to go first? Go ahead.
Go for it.
Okay, just working off of Betsy's comment regarding Christopher's reference to Roswell, which I thought was really good. If anybody knows about that, you know, you probably should. And the, I'm sorry, I changed my depth, but I was also struck by the numbers that are on there in terms of grant money. And there's one here for $337,000. I don't know if that's all potentially for one library or how that works. But I have noticed sort of an uptick, Nikki, in the grant activity that's occurring on the last couple of meetings. So I'm interested in that. Do you have any comment about that?
Well, you know, I think in light of everything that's been happening, the, the state and, I mean, federal funding has expanded to some extent too, to help libraries out. So we're just trying to keep an eye out in terms of like what grants, that's California State Library or the Southern California Library Consortium. Any money that they're throwing out there, we're definitely trying to take advantage of. So like Christopher, the, the big grant that was referenced in his report, he already had a plan for upgrading to Wi-Fi 6 and going to 10 gigabytes. He actually ended up like retracting because we, he found another way to like get almost the entire project funded. And that won't even touch the money that we get subsidized for E-Rate and other things, which is what we were going to be using to. So, so he just really keeps an eye out for how we can save money and get grants.
Well, that's terrific. Please pass on my appreciation about that. And then another observation I wanted to make is the programming partnership with the Pasadena Literary Alliance. Those are all, you know, big names in the world of publishing. And I wondered if Nicholas Meyer is the same Nicholas Meyer that wrote the 7% solution way back in the day? Or is it a different one?
I do not know. That would be a good question for Chloe.
Okay. And then having, having Michael Connolly involved in this is really big time as well. So how did that come together?
Sorry, Terry, some of you.
Terry, your sound is kind of pretty bad. Is there anything? It's, it's tough to hear you. You sound kind of like you're at the bottom of a well and then it breaks up a little bit.
Well, I could try signing in on my iPad in a different area of the house. So why don't I do that?
Okay.
Clear now.
It's a little bit better now. I don't know if you did anything differently. I know also Zoom, to be fair, has been like pretty laggy. As everybody in the entire universe is on a Zoom call simultaneously.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just if you kind of go a tiny bit slower than you normally would because it's just sort of echoey.
Okay, gotcha.
So, yeah, Pasadena, Pasadena Literary Alliance, Katie and I went before the crazy pandemic to one of their open book events. I think it was in February, right, Katie?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Something like that. So anyway, she connected me to the president of their board. And then after we closed, we ended up setting up some Zoom meetings to talk about how we could partner. And it's been a beautiful partnership because they're really good at getting authors. They are really connected. And what we're really good at is video editing and producing the like actual videos. So, I mean, I was going to say in my report tonight that Chloe has put in hours and hours editing to get those things like to the high quality that they are. But they've been a wonderful group to work with because again, they, they're very connected. Right off the bat, they reached out to Les Klinger and he knows like everybody. So thankfully, like he was able to call Michael Connolly and call Cornelia Fung, all of these other authors. So it's, it's been an awesome partnership that we're going to continue moving forward. And it was funny because at first we're like, what could we do in terms of virtual programming? And that's where this whole thing came to life, was it started out as maybe three, and I think we just finished the ninth with them. So we're, there, she's releasing one about every two to three weeks.
Well, that's good work. So thank you for that. That's all I had.
Okay, Jason, go for it.
So I just wanted to echo the recognition of the, the grant for, for the, the garden work at Bob Lucas. I know that that was a pretty significant issue that the community itself raised when we were doing the community meetings on the strategic plan as well as facilities. So it's really good to see that moving forward. I don't know if it was going to be part of any other reports tonight, but I noticed in the report for Bob Lucas as well that, you know, we are moving forward on curbside pickup at Bob Lucas as well. So I didn't know if there's any more details available as to when that might kick off.
Um, Diana is actually on the call if she wants to speak to that. It's already open actually, but I know she can. Details. And, and just so all of you are aware, once Stella left, Diana has taken over as our lead on curbside. So she, she can provide even more information than I can.
Oh, cool.
Yay. Hey, Diana.
Um, yeah, basically, we've, I think we've had curbside for the past couple of weeks now. It is a little lower on our end. We don't have as many spots available every, like, we have only one spot available every 10 minutes or so. But today, actually, we're pretty full. Every spot was taken. We did, we also started the printing, the remote printing last week. And we've gotten a few people asking for print jobs. And today at Bob, someone called asking to print. And I was verifying for this person their print job. He had a 251-page printout. And he was a college student and I guess this is the only way that he could get his materials for school. So.
Wow, that's awesome.
Really awesome. In the paper.
Exactly what we should be doing right now. That's so good to hear.
Do we still, Diana, sorry, this just occurred to me, do we still have drive-up Wi-Fi at Bob Lucas? Like, does it, does the range kick out to the parking lot if people need it? Okay, that's great. Sorry, Jason, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just.
No, that's, that's fine. That's all I really had, although I, you know, I know other people referenced it. But, you know, surpassing our goals on summer reading in this virtual world. You know, as much as we all hate to only see each other over Zoom, you know, it's proving to be successful for some things. So, good job.
Yep. And thank you, Nikki. You just sent everybody the link for the curbside survey. So for anybody who's watching online, that survey, you can find it at altadenalibrary.org/curbsidesurvey. So we'd love to hear from people about what they want. Any other comments or questions or highlights, anything people would like to pull out from the consent calendar? Okay, well, I'll just echo certainly what everybody else has said. I think in very challenging circumstances, everybody's continuing to just go above and beyond. And so thank you for that. And I was really excited in the teen report to see that we are going to have a TikTok account. So yes, I am here for that all day long. Cannot wait to follow Altadena Library on TikTok. Get it done. All right. So with that, we've got a motion and a second. So I'd like to go ahead and take a vote to approve the consent calendar. So if I could have a roll call vote, trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
I.
Thank you. And that's an I vote for me. So the consent calendar is approved. That brings us to item 3D, which is our special presentation. And today, we're going to hear about the demonstration garden at the Bob Lucas Library. And I know Diana, you're on the line with us. So take it away.
Hi, my name is Diana and I am the library manager at the Bob Lucas branch. And I'm really excited to talk about a really cool project that's happening actually right now. And also Jonathan is here with me as well. So in case of any technical questions, you guys can ask him about it. So I'm going to share my screen. I think you guys can see everything, right? Okay, so our demonstration garden. So our demonstration, I'm going to go through the few goals that we have for our demonstration garden. Oh, it's not changing. There you go. So we are, we hope to achieve like revitalizing the exterior with landscape that showcases drought tolerant plants and California natives. And we're also going to be applying sustainable techniques to it. We want to teach and inspire the Altadena community to replicate sustainable garden maintenance and practice it at home. So what we do will be easy and reciprocal for people, home gardeners as well. And then lastly, design fun and educational experiences for adults and children relating to nature, plants, and gardening. Okay, I'm going to go through the timeline of our project, which is from. So in latter part of July, I worked with Jonathan, our facilities manager, and a volunteer named Paulina to really adapt the concept that ARG or architects came up with. We spent about like a week, a week and a half really going through the plan in terms of like discussing what we would keep or anything we wanted to tweak or modify. We talked about like the plants, we talked about the materials, got estimates for like the flowers, materials, like decomposed granite, even rocks, and like the drainage system, which, not the drainage, the irrigation system that we're going to put in. And so after about, after about a week and a half, after our meetings, I consolidated all that information. And then came up with the, the project plan and proposal and submitted it to the Foothill Municipal Water Company. And who, who submitted to Metropolitan Water Company. And about two weeks later, mid-August, we heard back saying our project was approved for $10,000. And we're going to use it all on materials. Let's see, so shortly after that, our facilities team is working on removing the lawn. It's a very arduous, long task. It's probably going to take about a week, a week and a half, two, or maybe possibly even two. And then after they finish removing the lawn, they're going to do a lot of digging to prepare the area for like insulation of a drainage system, irrigation system, lighting, and also laying down the decomposed granite for the walkways. And also we'll be constructing like some hardscapes, like a stone bench and a flower bed. So September is a pretty busy month. But, and then in October, what we're really trying to aim for is to prepare for planting because the weather is more tolerable. I mean, doing research about plants and even though we are planting natives and like high sun type of plants, what I've learned was that our plants, once planted, need time to settle and develop their root systems. So October is a better time for planting. So we're really aiming for that. And then, and with the coming winter months, we hope the rain really like make them strong and thrive. Also in October, once all the hard work is done, I'm actually going to make it a team building activity for the Bob staff to do the planting of the plants. We're going to probably spend two to three days doing all the planting with the facilities crew as well as our volunteer Paulina, who has like this really great vision of where all the plants are going to go. And also like with wrapping in the team building, I had each of my staff members choose several plants that they wanted for the garden. So we're going to be doing that. Let's see, just to go over the pictures, the top photo was the arborist that came in to take down one of the limbs of our Brazilian pepper tree. That limb was actually growing and hitting one of the electric poles. So they had to take that down, but also gave us, taking that down made, made it easier for us to build the stone seating around the, the tree as well. And the bottom photo is our gardener Ricardo, who has started the tasks of like cutting up the grass and grids and removing it. Right now, I don't know if anyone has really driven by, but a lot of grass has been taken out right now and it's like drying out. So some of you may recognize this image. It is the design plan that ARG came up with. I just added all these scientific names of the plants that we're, we will be putting in, in, on our exterior. This is actually the plan that I included as part of my project proposal. So Metropolitan would be able to see like, get a sense of our space or exterior space as well as like see where and what we will be planting. Okay, so this is just a list of a few of the sun, the sun tolerant and like California natives. The lavender that we've chosen, we have several kinds, but this lavender, the intermediate grosso is actually like one of the more fragrant species of the lavender. So that's really cool. We have a lot of California natives that'll bring in a lot of color. So even though with just a few of these examples, you can see that our garden will be full of color. And also during like the design phase, I talked about really wanting plants that would attract those bees and birds. So we did select plants that would draw in those like butterflies and the pollinators. Next. And of course, no Southern California garden is complete without a succulent cactus garden. We're going to have a little spot. Oh, actually a big area devoted to that right at the corner of Ventura and Lincoln. You'll see there's like the aloe plants, agave, lots of color as well. I'm going to move on to the several main areas that we'll be working on. So this is the main lawn area along Lincoln. We are going to remove all that grass. Make way for the decomposed granite walkway. We're going to utilize that flower bed that you see by the window and along the slate wall. More natives and drought tolerant plants will be planted closer to the sidewalk where the bus stop is. Installation of a French drainage system, drip irrigation and landscape lighting. So this next slide is what it could possibly look like. We did a rendering using like a free app. So I had a lot of fun designing. So this is just to give you an idea, the possibility of what will it look like. As you see the walkway, we, we actually have the potential, also putting like pavers down to like make it really I don't know, you'll see the stepping stones for people to walk and create a path. Lots of color in there. The next area I wanted to focus on is the front patio area. People do sit there. Students walk by, wait for the bus, want some shade. So the same thing, we're going to be removing that lawn. There's going to be DJ, DG, which is decomposed granite walkway. We're going to construct a matching flower bed along that the patio area. And then again, there's going to be installation of drip irrigation system and landscape lighting. This was our vision. So it'll look nice. And finally, this is the Lincoln Ventura corner. Again, we're going to remove all the lawn. There's the walkway. We're going to, where the existing tree is, we're going to build a circular stone seating and it'll actually double as a planter. So what you can sit around there, I'm going to put potted plants around there. And the corner towards the front of library property, you'll see a succulent and cactus garden. And that's going to be a, a big area right there. And then again, drip irrigation and landscape lighting. And then so opening up to any questions.
Great. Thank you, Diana. Any questions? This is awesome.
Yeah, this is a few levels of awesome.
It's actually a free app that I found to do the rendering. So I'm sure if I had gotten something more professional, I could have done like a 360 view, but yeah.
No, I think, I think it's, it's super and it helps to have those visualizations, right? Because I think it really kind of gets everybody in the right frame of mind. Beautiful job.
Yeah, I agree. Just a terrific job.
You know, the other thing that I think is important to point out is as we went through the strategic planning outreach to the community and then the facilities outreach to the community, you know, one of the things that we committed to as a library is that, you know, as we move forward and looking at a potential bond issue, we were going to continue to address these updates and upgrades as much as possible through grants and other kinds of things. So that ultimately, if we do get to that point, whatever amount of money we're talking about is going to be reduced. And you know, this was a huge part of what came up in Bob Lucas and the fact that we're able to move forward with a combination of grants, staff time and volunteers. You know, it's going to take a huge chunk of money out of that budget that we had been looking at. And then, you know, in addition to just looking awesome and it's everything Bob Lucas deserves, you know, that's a critical part of it too.
Absolutely. Other thoughts or comments, questions for Diana?
Another comment from me. I just love the emphasis on California native plants because I think that'll be really important. And that was brought up in the meeting. So this is really nice to see, you know, vision, there's kind of a shared vision starting to take shape. So thank you very much for that progress. A very nice presentation.
Yeah, we're really excited. Once we started seeing the grass coming up, we're like, oh my goodness. And where are us spending time right now? Also like developing programming and planning for that. There's like a sunflower growing contest that we can have with the kids and stuff. And so, yeah. And I'm really looking forward to planning with my staff. I think we'll make it a really good day. And then we can also like strategically plan for the following year in terms of what we want to do.
And I see Jonathan sitting back there quietly listening. Great job Jonathan, you too, for all of the work that that you must have put into this, coordinating all the gardening and all the other stuff. So way to go.
He's ready to start digging the drain, the drainage system.
We're, we're going to be using a sod cutter to get up absolutely, that could use, repurpose some of the sod that we got off the north side of the Bob Lucas, bring it over here, some patches that we need to use to repurpose here. Also, one of the things that we did, forgot to also let Diana know is we're going to put little plaques. So we were talking about putting little plaques on each of the California names that we do have. And so that it'll give the genius and also give the typical name of what the plant is. So when people come by, they could be able to see it. Also, we were given a suggestion to put a little QR, QR code. So they could press on the code and they could see what the type of plant it is and also the maintenance of it. And they could go on certain apps and we could also introduce them to a different app called Picture This that shows all these things too. They could also diagnose what problem is with the plant. So it's a teaching garden movement, I think, also.
Awesome.
Katie, if I could just say quickly, please. I'm, you know, mind blown in many ways, but two in particular. One, you know, in, in all of the town hall meetings and everything, I just, I didn't get a, the part that this would be a whole big old source of library programming. That's just, that's just amazing. And also I, Diana, kudos to you because I just love the aspect of team building that you're bringing in with it and to get, to let everybody pick their own plant. It's like, you know, that is what you call buy-in, man. Those people are going to be out there like worrying about their plants and talking to the neighbors that are going by, no, no, my plant, no, my plant. I can just, I can just see the fun factor at Bob Lucas, as fun as it already is, it's just gone up. And I, I never pictured those things when this was all in the, in the planning. So it's just even more exciting. And just by the way, PS, the color. I mean, I know it was an app and I know you had a lot of fun, but, but to, to let us actually see what the effect of color is going to have on the, just the exterior beauty of that building is huge. So
It was hard for me to visualize because we see it. I've been looking at that garden for the last three years and once I found that app, I was like, oh, this is amazing. And so, I mean, what, what, the images that are rendered, it's, it's not going to compare to what the actual product will be. So
No, but it's get, it's getting everybody excited.
Yeah.
Me, getting me excited, that's for sure.
We're going to have like over 160 plants. So it's like 30 or 40 different types of species there. So over like 2,600 square feet of area. And we're also going to be doing stuff in the back parking lot as well, because that does act as like more of a main entrance for us.
Yeah. Awesome. Any other questions or comments for Diana? Well, I just want to say, this is so exciting. Thank you guys so much. It's really, I think especially right now, like it's so wonderful to see something growing and developing and coming. It's been a rough year and it's so wonderful to see just like this vision of renewal that we can all look forward to. And I know I'm going to start driving by Bob Lucas every day, once those plants start going in, just to see like what plant went in next. I can't wait. And I'm also excited to learn because I think this is going to be so much fun. And I know there's such a demand for learning about gardening in Altadena, but also learning about California natives because they can be a little finicky. So this is, this is awesome. Kudos, guys. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Thank you, Jonathan, to your team too, for all the hard work I know you guys are doing. And it's brutally hot. So please like tell everybody we, we're thinking of you. We appreciate you and tell them to stay hydrated. It's hot out there. All right, guys. Thank you so much. All right, that brings us now to section five. We have no items removed from the consent calendar. So we have the reports from our support groups. And I know we have Bridget here with us for a foundation report.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Right now, in addition to play pledging the $80,000 to Measure Z campaign, we've transferred funds to Edward Jones Investments. And then we're also beginning, just at the very beginning, to explore possibilities for establishing an endowment for the library at, with the Pasadena Community Foundation. And as you can imagine, we're pretty intensely focused right now in Taste of Dina. Our virtual event, mark your calendars, will be September 26. We are just now polishing up our silent auction, which is going to be really cool because we're really helping out local businesses. Instead of asking for donations, although some are insisting on giving donations, we're actually purchasing gift cards from many, many of the local restaurants and businesses. And then we're also going to have the wine pool. And that's already online. So you can go ahead and do that as well. And then, you know, as you can imagine, we're pretty excited to already start receiving financial donations. We've received about $2,000 so far. And then we also got a very lovely donation from a local wine collector of 100 bottles wine. And that's what we're putting in our wine pool. And it's really nice quality wine. So we're going to do the wine pool and then we're going to have the pickup the week before the event. And Gail Gaston has agreed to allow the foundation to set up a table at the Ale House on Fair Oaks, so people can come by and pick up their wine there. Our hope is also then that people might go in and have a drink and support our local ale house. And of course, you guys already know, but we are, our funds this year are going to be designated to help with fund a mobile unit which then can reach all of Altadena. So we're happy about that. Then we are equally excited and challenged with turning our attention to helping to engage our community in supporting Measure Z. This opportunity has been the very sort of thing that the foundation has been looking for to champion. So many dedicated people before us, of course, have been looking for ways to fund the critical needs of the library. And we're just grateful to be in the right place at the right time to realize the mission that was established by the foundation decades ago. We're grateful for the previous work that others have done and we're looking forward to working with former foundation directors as well as the friends and neighbors in our community who love our libraries. And just, that's the end of my report, but I just want to add an addendum after listening to Diane describe the, the garden. And of course, I never take off my foundation hat. So as I was looking at those paving stones or whatever they decide to use, the, the granite for the walkways, all I could think of was the opportunity to offer people naming opportunities for a gift at a certain level, to have a message or a literary quote put on those stones. So I got really, really excited about that. So I'm going to start putting on my thinking hat for that and see where it goes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Bridget.
Of course.
And I don't believe we have a report from the friends. Is that correct, Nikki? Okay. All right then, Nikki, I'm going to hand it to you for the director's report, which starts on page 20 of your packet. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to Bridget while she's here.
Yeah, of course. Please, sorry.
Thank you very much, Bridget, for your, your work on all this. And I, just a little thing, but I got your letter about Taste of Dina. I'm sure all of us did and how it benefits the curiosity connection and all of the activities you've outlined. Really nice job. That's the kind of letter that I think gets attention for people. I just wanted to pass on my compliments for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I didn't mean to force all discussion. Any other questions or comments for Bridget or anything else you guys want to chat with her about while she's here?
Well, I'm not going anywhere, so.
I will say to second Terry's comment, the day you guys mailed the letter, I got like three or four different people who texted me and they were like, how do I donate? I'm excited to do it. And I was like, go to that website. Make that donation, do it. So I think, you know, people, yeah, definitely. And I don't know, like getting mail is the highlight. That and eating is the highlight of my day anymore. Can't go anywhere.
And I do, I do want to say I am so grateful to Chloe and Michaela for the work they're doing on this. At, at this stage of the game, with everything we're facing, we could not do it without their help. We simply couldn't.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right, Nikki. Take it away.
Yeah.
I want to thank Diana and of course now my dogs start breaking. Diana and Jonathan for that wonderful presentation and for all their work to apply for the grant and put together such a great plan. I even got to go on a field trip with them to Descanso Gardens. So if, and that's the first time I'd been over there. So this has been really great that she's kept an eye on this grant funding and we've been able to take advantage of it based on the plans that ARG set forward with us. Obviously, we don't want to do anything that wouldn't work in tandem with the work that we're going to do in the future at the branch, but I agree with you guys. With the work that we're gonna do in the future at the branch. But I agree with you guys, it's really gonna like. Demonstrate what we're looking at and why we're asking for public funding. And um. That's just a taste of the many things to come. Um, also, kudos to Jonathan's wife, Paulina, who has been volunteering her time to help put that plan together. She has a very, very green thumb, a whole green hand, actually, in comparison to most people. So I did wanna give her a shout out for that. Um, in addition, I have been texting with Milane during this meeting, and we're gonna plan on having her present next month about the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. As well as some other children's updates. Her and I had been talking about having her present in September. So. She said it'll be much more flushed out by then as well, Betsy. So I think it'll, it'll be a good time to present to you guys. So I do wanna start off this report by saying, since we met three weeks ago, um, I don't have as much to report on. But some of the items of note, as I wrote in my report, we have um, been going through the interview process for the assistant director. We did the final round of interviews on Thursday, Nicole, Christopher and I, and we offered the position and the person accepted. So we're very, very excited about that. Um, obviously, we have to go through the onboarding process in terms of background check and live scan, but. I think everyone's gonna be very pleased, and we're hoping that they will start sometime mid to late September. I know um, the adult services team is really excited. I mean, I know how much they love having me as their supervisor, but I, I know they're very much looking forward to. Having this new person come on board and really provide some consistent leadership for that department, which is ultimately my goal. Uh, so I also wrote about um, some of these changes that we've made to the office space at the building. Um, everybody has really appreciated um, some of these moves. And what kind of like. Started the conversation was um, we had Stella downstairs. And with her resigning, it gave us the opportunity to really look at like, how do we want the staff spaces laid out? And I've heard over and over again that it's really hard for the assistant director or person in charge of adult services to be downstairs. So I, I spoke to our passport services team, and they were all about having an external um, entrance. So that they could service the public, even if, let's say, we're not open um, fully, we could even explore having passport services. So Jonathan, I believe, said the dividers to build the passport services offices are gonna be coming in this week. So a lot of these things are really gonna happen fast. And, and as a result, the children and teen, um, team are all in one space. So now they're, they're working. More collaboratively in that area, as well as the adult services and circulation, they're gonna all be upstairs in the same room as well. I think part of the issue in the past is everybody's been a bit scattered and they're not working in proximity to one another. So um. We're this week going to order the furniture for this, the circulation room, as well as the assistant director's office. Because as you know, with the A R G reports, we hadn't planned on renovating those areas. So. We're gonna get some new flooring and paint and set those up for good. And the, the furniture will match what we have currently in my office, as well as where Nicole and Chloe and Natalia are. So everybody's really excited about that. Um, amazing what a little bit of moving people around can do for having a fresh start, you know? Uh, let's see. So as Katie and I talk every week and have our weekly updates, right now, we're closed to the public until at least October fifth. Her and I are gonna continue to watch the numbers out of L A County. Um, and especially with us expanding curbside, you know, as we talked about, now you can get printouts and you can get copying services. You can get three D printing. We're expanding library of things. I just think we have to have a really good reason to have the staff come in contact with the public that we can't already be offering through curbside in a safe way. So again, I'll keep you guys updated on that, but that's what we're looking at right now. And again, thank you to Diana for taking over curbside. She's done a really excellent job, because things constantly change, procedures. Processes and all of that. She's done a wonderful job of every week updating everybody on anything that shifted. So that the staff really feel like informed and knowledgeable about what's going on, which is why I think. Our curbside, from all the feedback I've gotten from people that go to other ones, like I think Betsy does. They really like our curbside, because it's like a really seamless um, easy process for both the patron and the staff. As far as the programming partnerships, thank you, Terry, for bringing up Pasadena Literary Alliance. I wanted to encourage all of you, if you haven't taken a look. At those YouTube videos with the authors, I highly recommend it. Chloe intersperses like graphics and information throughout. Um, so they're excellent programs, honestly. Big thanks to Chloe for her many, many hours of work on this, as well as our partners with Pasadena Literary Alliance, like. This is something that I can see us like long into the future, continuing to expand upon. And as Bridget mentioned, Taste of Dinas is preparation is in full swing. And we, I'm really grateful that the focus is gonna be on mobile service, because as we know, like traditional library services. What will they ever look like at this point? But being able to like get out into the more underserved areas of Altadena by having a van to do so. Is really exciting to us. And, and of course, we'll build that in to our future programming and planning anyway. But like the fact that the foundation has kind of like owned this as their baby to help us get it, get it funded is wonderful. And as I mentioned, the painting was picked up on August fourteenth. And if there's any updates with that, I'll provide that, but we do anticipate it's gonna be gone for one to two months. Lastly, I asked Christopher to put together a different statistical out, like. Look at what, you know, now that we're actually checking things out through curbside, what does that look like in terms of growth month to month? Um, I was interested to see that July was slower than June, but we actually see that as a trend every year, that things slow down. I don't know if it's like. Nobody's traveling right now, but like it's right before school, things drop. So I don't know if there's other.
Oh, Nikki, you froze for just a minute. Uh-oh. We'll just give it a minute, she'll come back. Zoom. It's a good thing this doesn't happen in real life.
Most of the time.
Most of it, sometimes, you know what? There's nothing you can do. Uh-oh, no. Alright. Let me just send a chat, Nikki, let her know she's frozen. Oh, she's gonna jump off and jump back on. Okay. We'll just hang out for a minute. It's a P S A to remind everybody to renew your membership in the Friends of the Library if you haven't already. Donate to Taste of Dina. We do have Marnie with us, guys. So after um. After Nikki's report, we'll just go back and we'll hear from, we'll hear a report from the Friends. She's back.
Yes.
Hey.
Interesting day competing with um, two students in the house. First day of school. It's been, it's been an interesting day. Um, so I think I cut off when I was asking if there were any other statistical information that you guys want us to provide. If so, like you can always shoot me an email, but um, we're just gonna keep playing with it, because right now it's like comparing apples and oranges, you know? And our, and I think Christopher said our circulation numbers are like ten percent of what they were before, you know what I mean? So. Uh, we'll just continue to look at it and, and share the information that we think is relevant with you.
Yeah, I think uh, my comment, Nikki, can, can you hear me okay? Okay, is that uh, this is a nice redo of that statistical. Look at what's happening. I've always enjoyed being able to look back over time and see how things are growing or waning. Take this all, give us a snapshot of this, but I think you're right, there's not too many. Yeah, not too many categories that, that grown for sure, because we've been closed. But I, I'll be looking forward to seeing this as it evolves in the future. So thanks. And now I just have one comment on the painting, and that is with it being. Due to sort of return in a couple of months. I've always thought it would be nice to have some sort of an event surrounding that, some sort of a promoter. People are interested in the library, maybe stopping by to see it and so on. And it just occurred to me that one group that might be interested in helping somehow, not sure how, but maybe. Would be the Altadena Historical Society. They're always looking for new ideas for programming. And if there's, you've got two months now. To think of some sort of small promotional event. Uh, I think that might be a nice thing to do with that painting, especially since. I have heard many comments, not many, but a few comments about the painting and wouldn't it be nice if it got redone, et cetera. So I mean, just like the gardening that's going on, this plan for Bob Lucas, I think this is an event that can draw attention to the library.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thanks, Terry. We'll work on that.
Okay. Other questions for Nikki? Yeah, Betsy, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, one idea for statistics that I'm curious about is would there be any way to measure? Phone reference or, or online reference? Questions or calls? I, I don't know how much of that is happening, or if it's something that can be tallied. Um, but that's a service, if it's happening, that could probably be measured.
I believe they are keeping track of all of the reference statistics, but. Depending on, it's not super consistent from person to person, so.
It's hard to do, I know.
We'll keep working on that, and that's another one we could share.
Um, and then my other comment is, uh, uh, um, maybe didn't have anything more to say about it, but the board election deadline passing was in your report and. That's probably worth saying something about in terms of what we might. Be looking ahead to as the process for. Appointing for the third seat. And I guess the only thing I would hope for is some. You know, like long lead time of publicity to just get the word out there that that seat. Is gonna be there, not just like the month before to put, to put the applications out. I mean, I think we. We could, you know, as much lead time as we can, can have would be to our benefit in terms of making sure anybody who might think of it finds out.
Yeah, Katie and I have had conversations about making sure that we have as long of a lead time for people to apply. Um, I did have Natalia in touch with L A County about like what we're allowed to do versus not. You know, I, I wanna make sure that we're abiding by the law in terms of the promotion of it, but. Being that you declared that you weren't running, um, we're hopeful that we'll be able to start getting the word out soon.
Well, and even if I hadn't declared, with the deadline passing, now it's official. So, you know, I don't think there's any. Okay.
Yeah, and just to, just to clarify on that, so because only two people filed. For three seats, those two individuals, so Terry and Camila will be automatically appointed. There's not gonna be, it's not gonna appear on the ballot. It's not gonna be a contested election. And then we can, um, I don't know, Nikki, did we hear back how early we could start from L A County? Did they have any? I know we were gonna check with them.
Can you speak to that, Natalia?
I reached out, but we hadn't heard back from them. I can follow up tomorrow, just to double check.
Let's find out. They've been very busy, because the filing deadline was the beginning of this month, and there's a lot going on. But I think, you know, Betsy's absolutely right, like the more runtime we get on this, the better. Um, certainly. And um. If we can, we can advertise early, that gives us enough time. And then we can have that um, vacancy appointment process at the December. The December board meeting, which is I think on the fourteenth or. It's early enough in December. So that would be, that would be the way to go. And I think, you know, it's something we're gonna keep on our radar, right, going forward. So obviously, as we move into our redistricting process. Hopefully, that will encourage people, you know, um. To run in uh, smaller districts. But I think one thing that has been very clear is that we need to. Embrace a much more active recruiting process. To get people ready to go for these, for these seats in these elections, because we don't wanna have a situation in future where we have uncontested elections, if we can avoid it, right? Okay, other questions or comments for Nikki? Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much, Nikki. Uh, we're gonna go a little bit out of order here, but we do have Marnie with us from the Friends. So if I could ask you, Marnie, to come on and update us on what's going on with the Friends.
Hi, I hope you can hear me.
We can.
Oh, good. So I just wanted to say that um, the Friends did donate five thousand dollars to the campaign, uh, to the Measure Z. And we are reaching out to uh, our supporters to. Work for this endeavor. This is the sort of thing that we do think is our core mission, and um, it's the reason the Friends are around, actually. Um, other than that, I wanted to say we are going to have our board meeting on Saturday. I'm thinking. It'll be another Zoom meeting or something. And we're hoping that we'll be able to get more community members involved that way if we do a Saturday rather than an evening meeting. We'll see how that works for other COVID times. And I also wanted to say thank you, uh, Katie, for that. That comment about supporting the Friends. Uh, we do appreciate that. We do, we do want, you know, we're not having our book sale, so we're not raising as much money as we ordinarily would. So we will be depending most, we will be depending primarily on memberships to generate money this year. And that's all I had to say. Thanks so much. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being with us, Marnie. I appreciate it.
Um, Katie, did Marnie tell what time the board meeting is on Saturday?
Uh, I don't know, Marnie, do you, did, she did not say, do you, can you tell us what time it is on Saturday, Marnie?
What time it is? It's going to be, our usual board meeting is the Monday after Labor Day, which would be September fourteenth. But we wanted to meet earlier than that, so we will meet the Saturday after Labor Day. A few days earlier.
Oh, got it, okay.
Do it by Zoom uh, at around noon.
Got it, got it, got it, okay.
For other people to.
Thanks for clarifying, Marnie, because I thought it was coming up this Saturday.
I did too. I mis, I misunderstood as well. So Marnie, that would be Saturday, the twelfth, is that correct?
Twelfth of September.
Okay, got it.
That on our, on our website as well.
Okay. So Saturday, September twelfth at noon.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, guys. I, I was marking my calendar for this Saturday, and I would have been. In a Zoom room of one.
Sorry.
Perfect. Alright, thank you so much, Marnie. Really appreciate it. Okay, moving bravely onward, guys, we are now into our financial reports. Um, Nikki, do we have Nicole with us, or are you doing financials today?
Um, I will be doing that. It was Nicole's birthday on Saturday, so happy birthday to her.
Happy birthday, Nicole. That's awesome.
Yeah, so she took a little bit of a long weekend, so good for her. Uh, so this is um, financial statements for June twenty twenty, which um, as you know, that puts us at a hundred percent of the budget year. Um, as indicated on the balance sheet, actual year-to-date expenditures exceed actual year-to-date revenues, reflecting a net income of negative two hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred forty-nine. And ten cents. And just to clarify, that means that we were underspent last fiscal year by two hun, over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, Nicole believes that was largely due to being closed and the spending just not um. Being what it normally would have been, had we been open to the public. I mean, it affected everything from utilities to book purchasing to, you know, all kinds of things, so. Um.
Nikki, can I, can I just jump in with a question real quick?
Sure.
So they were, that, that, I was, I was wrestling with, it says, it says that expenditures exceeded. Revenues, but really it's the other way around, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, because when I read it that way too, I was like, what? And she said, no, it's, it's opposite, like, we were underspent by two hundred and eighty.
Okay, I got it. Cause I double checked the figures and it wasn't coming out that way. Alright, thank you.
We were underspent. So um, just a couple highlights, as um. Several of you have mentioned as well, we did receive two uh, donations or grants in June, three thousand of which uh, came from Southern California Library Cooperative. Which we were able to spend on e, e-materials is what they operated up as. So that helped us cover more spending in cloud library. And we also received three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars from the city of Pasadena to purchase supplies for youth services through First Connections. Um, we also made our final payment to A R G for the work that they did for us, as well as our final payment to Coffin Associates for the classification and compensation study work. A, a progress payment was made to Clifford Moss for the polling and feasibility work, as well as um, twenty-two thousand to B B and K. Sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six, of which was related to the C F D formation. Um, and I think that's it for highlights. I'm happy to answer, hopefully answer any questions you have related to the financials.
Just one question, and I know, like, this kind of is a recurring thing, it comes up every so often. Just because we only get the majority of our funding twice a year, right? So. So we're required to keep the six months of operating revenue as, like, that has to be kept aside, it can't really be touched. And I know that sometimes we get above that amount. Is, is, is there like a strategic goal with how we use that, or is that? Driven more by the fact that we have very little revenue for six months, and then we get the big county check and need to cover that?
Well, I do know that, um, by the time we get the check, I think it's in December. Um, you know, there's, there's times Nicole has to pull more from the county or other reserves to make sure that we can pay all the bills. Uh, it is, our reserves are healthy right now, but I think um, the Budget Committee would agree with me that, based on the financial forecasting we did, it's a good thing. Um, you know, obviously, like, moving forward with um, a ballot measure and securing more public funding will help, but if we were not to, for some reason, for that not to work out, um, we showed that by year five, from right now, we would be dip- dipping into reserves. So, it is, I do think we have healthy reserves right now, they're almost twice what we need them to be, but um, with the uncertainty of the finances moving forward in terms of property tax collection, and who knows really what um COVID's gonna do to property tax collection in the next few years. Uh, I think, I think Katie and Terry would agree with me that we need to keep the reserves as big as we can right now.
So it's essentially, we can do the minimum, or we can do kind of a best practice?
Right, right.
Very good.
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd agree with Nikki and and Terry. I think, you know, we've had this conversation in Budget Committee meetings before, but you know, where our reserves are right now is that one point nine is the requirement, and that's like, where we are is actually, it's not quite double, it's about eighty-seven percent of of double, so it's like, maybe one, one point, whatever. Anyway, it's not quite, it's not quite two X, the six months. But I think that Nikki is absolutely right, and I, like, I hope that we can just keep those where they need to be, and they can just just hang out, but I also would not be like hugely shocked and amazed if in the coming year or two, LA County were to experience some hiccups with collecting and dispersing revenues. So I think, like, we'll get it eventually, but I would feel a whole lot more confident having at least a two X operating expense in there, if we were at, you know, basically a year worth of operating expenses. I think that would be very wise. Um, just because I think that things may be unpredictable in the coming several years, and having that cash on hand means we're not going to experience any interruptions of services or programming or anything else like that that we need to do.
Just a, a couple of more observations too from me. Were you done, Katie? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I am. Go ahead, please.
Um, when you look at passport services fees for the whole year, it's actually not as bad as it could have been, given the shutdown of the library and so on. So, to the extent, Nikki, I heard you talking about this earlier, that you're kind of revamping passport services, where the office is, if I'm hearing right, you know, how you're running it, all the other stuff, that's a revenue center for us, and if we can come out of the pandemic with a really positive change in how that moves, et cetera, how people move through that space and spend their money, that'll have a good effect on that, and that's your biggest revenue source outside of property taxes. So that's a really good move. And, you know, I'm always a, a, a big, um, you know, a cheerleader for events that can occur that will promote the services that we have, so if you think of something there too, to tell the public about new passport services, and we've got a new system, whatever it might be, you might get a little bit more action on that, uh, going forward. And the other thing, I mean, we had these huge extraordinary expenses that took place in the last fiscal year, having to do with settlements, legal settlements, and legal fees and all that, and that, of course, was way down, so those extraordinary expenses didn't occur this year. But one thing I noticed, and uh, I'm probably singing out of the same hymnal that that Bessie does every now and then, is that our, the amount that we spent um, for library materials was re- really a lot lower. And I get that because of the COVID and everything. But uh, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're keeping an eye on that and spending appropriately. I would have thought it'd be even a little bit more given what we've gone through, so um, your review on, you know, the core, that's a core service that we provide about materials we have and how they're being disassembled is really appreciated.
Well, and, and can I say, um, I moved technical services under Christopher Kellermeyer's supervision, and the first thing that him and Carleen worked on was an analysis of the collection based on spending versus actual checkouts and turnover rate. So, looking at how we're allocating what we're buying, based on what's popular and what people really want, and we have ended up shifting a lot of money around, because where, where we were spending a lot um, in the past, isn't necessarily what is highly circulating. So, for example, like, children's is, makes up almost fifty percent of our circulation from what they they found in the numbers, and they were only getting like a fourth of the budget. So there's, like, we're, we're shifting this year to reflect what people actually are checking out and want. And a lot of that honestly has moved into the digital realm as well. Like, we were not spending much on digital at all, and now there's been quite a bit more spending in that way. And I mean, due to COVID, yes, but also I think there's a lot of people, like, I know I only listen to di- digital audiobooks. That's the only way I read, you know, many people, it's the same thing, so. I agree with you, and I, we have every intention of spending all of the collection budget this year, but in a more um, informed manner. That's how I put it.
Great, thank you. I know you're throwing a lot of time and talent at that too, so like, we really appreciate you taking on those things.
That's great, Nikki. I love a data-driven approach. That's super smart. Makes a ton of sense. Sorry, Camila, you had a question, and I want to make sure you get a chance to ask it. Go ahead. Oh, wait, your sound is real weird. Hang on one second. Okay, you want to try again? Nope, still super funky, sorry.
It's probably the question she typed up, which was.
Yeah, it, it is. Oh, there we go.
Is that better?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so the question that I had was just a general question in terms of what does it mean that there's cash with the county? I just didn't understand what that meant.
Totally.
So the county um, collects the property taxes and the parcel tax, the special assessment for us. So we have accounts with them, so that, like, we'll have to put in a, I don't remember what the word is, I just signed one last week, where we'll, we'll ask them to transfer money into our banking account, but a lot of it sits with them. And I believe Nicole leaves it there because it makes pretty good interest with the county in those accounts. So like, recently I had to sign, because if our, if our cash gets low, we'll put in a re- a request with the county to transfer. So, we, they just hold money for us in accounts that's collected through property tax.
Great question. Any other questions for Nikki on finances? Betsy, please.
Um, yeah, I do. Um, I just had a couple line items jump out at me on pages thirty-five and thirty-six that I wanted to ask about. Um, one is if you know of online sixty-four thirty-two earthquake insurance, why did our premium go up so much? Last year was eighteen thousand, this year it's thirty thousand?
I'm not sure why it did, I just know that we knew it did.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just, I think we talked about it last, last month, there was a, if I'm recalling correctly, there was some, I feel bad that I don't remember now, but there was some note in either, I think the meeting on the sixteenth um, about why, there was an explanation. It was something about, yeah, Lloyd's cranked everybody's up and.
Probably because there have been earthquakes lately.
Prob- probably, yeah.
I remember, I remember too, we shopped around for it, as I recall. I think Nicole was shopping around to get a good rate on it, so.
Well, I think it's the only place that will give us a policy, because they, they tried to shop for it in the last year or two. But because of the, the cost, you know, like, the amount of our um, payout, basically, that was the only firm we could get a.
Yeah, because they're, they're non-admitted, but there were no admitted carriers that would insure us for what it would cost to actually replace the buildings.
Yep.
Um, and, okay, so, two more, and forgive me if we've talked about this already and I don't remember.
No, of course.
Same page, fifty-two seventy, workers' comp was really high this year, and I do have, I do have a feeling that we've talked about that, and I don't remember why.
Um, that was due to all of the workers' comp claims we've had to pay out in the last few years. It's just really upped the rate.
This is, okay, so it just accumulated.
That was one that, when um, the quote came in, our Cindy, our accountant was saying to us, like, oh, I think maybe we should shop it, and then, like, Nicole spoke to us, um, SDRMA, whoever we get it, and like, we would have had to pay that with anyone that we tried to go with.
Okay. Um, then lastly, on the next page, thirty-six, I d- I don't get why, um, summer reading sixty-two sixty. Why does it show that only twenty-four dollars was spent last year? And eleven thousand dollars was spent this year? That just doesn't make sense.
Last year, I believe, um, see, if you look under Adult Services for eighteen nineteen, um, all of, all of SRP came out of one account. So, this past year, they divided it by different.
Got it, okay. So it was just breaking it out into a separate line item this year. Okay, got it, that makes sense. Okay, that's it for me, thanks.
Perfect, thank you. And I believe the same is true, like, for volunteer services, right, Nikki? Like, that is another one that we, which is why it looks really weird.
Yep, they, they were even their own line item, basically.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Okay, any other questions uh, for Nikki on finances? Okay, then let's come into our committee reports. So Terry, uh, Budget Committee, do you have anything for us?
Um, no, for the Budget Committee, I, I don't. I, I was trying hard to get a meeting, as you know, Katie, when one, when the opportunity for one didn't really exist. So, uh, I think, uh, you know, we'll just keep looking for the date where we can go over the planning for the new budget.
Okay.
Or the, you know, the way that the current spending.
Sounds good. All right, um, California Voting Ri- Voter Rights Act, uh, Committee, no real report there, other than just a reminder that the census deadline got pushed up, so previously, the deadline for census completion was October, um, end of October. It has now been pushed to the end of September, which gives folks just a month less to complete the census. And of course, that twenty-twenty-one census data is what we're relying on for our districting process that will take place in twenty-twenty-one, so um, just please, a reminder to everybody, if you, I'm sure everybody who's here has filled out the census, but the other day, I had somebody come to my door to ask me about one of my neighbors who they hadn't been able to get a hang, um, a handle on, and so you can make sure that your friends and neighbors know that they too should fill out the census, if they haven't done it yet, enumerators are out walking around, and we just want to get the best, most complete data we can on population, so that we can get that library service funding that we need and draw really fair and complete districts. So, plug for the census. Um, District Director Evaluation, uh, Betsy.
Um, I think, um, more information's gonna come up un- under the sun, under new business, but I'll just um, give a preview. Um, I, um, we've been through Nikki's first year, kind of halfway through it, and we've done our, we did our three-month evaluation, we did our six-month evaluation, and um, she had the idea, Nikki did, that um, that, that maybe with the Coffin Associates, um, uh, work that, that was done on HR stuff in many uh, areas, it might be a good time to just really look at and evaluate the idea of a, of a improved annual evaluation form for, you know, from now going forward, and so Nikki's annual evaluation is coming up in November, and um, so I guess, I guess I'll stop there and just say, I, I think the, the details of the process that we went through to draft the form um, has been done, and it's in a packet for us to discuss later in the agenda.
Great, thank you. And yes, we will, we will be coming back to that and talk about it in more detail. Um, seven B is our, is our new business item. Um, Public Funding Committee Report, you guys will see in your board package a copy of the Argument in Favor. This is the um, argument that gets printed in the sample ballot, so everybody will see a copy of that, that will go out to all voters. And a big thank you to the signatories to the argument, who are willing to lend their support to this, to um, to say that they, they agree with this argument. So, just a reminder, oh, sorry, go ahead, somebody had something. Okay, maybe it was just weird feedback. Um, just a reminder that, of course, we are now in a split, parallel universe world, where all of us as trustees in our um library email accounts and on library uh, supported platforms are providing information only to people, so we are not advocating um, for anything. We are telling people what the facts are, and we are directing them to the library website or to Nikki to learn more about Measure Z, which is the measure letter that was assigned for us, so um, as Nikki pointed out earlier, the Altadena Libraries do it all from A to Z, which I think is exceedingly charming. Um, but then, of course, we do have a campaign effort running independently, that is not in any way supported or financed by the library, so anybody with any questions about campaign stuff, um, I really encourage you to reach out to me offline, and we can always talk about that. But in terms of the information-only piece, basically, from now until November third, which is the election, which is seventy-two days away from now, the library will continue providing information only, making sure that people have all the facts. Um, and also that, of course, we're, you know, providing people with all the information they need to vote um, in this election in a safe and secure way, and so what that will mean in terms of ballot drop-offs or voting centers, you know, we're waiting to hear back from LA County, but getting that information to people so that they can register, they can vote, and they can get all the information they need in a timely fashion. That's really going to be our effort from the library side for the next um, seventy-two days. Okay. All right, uh, Liaison Reports. I know, um, it looks like, Betsy, we've got some government liaison stuff?
Yeah, um, uh, um, I'm not gonna go into this in excruciating detail, don't worry, but um, when I looked at this uh, CSDA Action Brief this month, there were quite a few things that could um, could impact us, and then toward the back, I'll, I'll let you know about something from the American Library Association. Um, so I'm just gonna point out some of these highlights, so if you're starting on page thirty-nine of your packet, that's where the table of contents is, but I'll just go through it um, uh, briefly. So, the, the information on page forty talks about um, federal COVID relief um, measures that are kind of making their way through Congress, and um, it could be that if this, you know, if this ends up um, passing, that we, there may be a way for us to apply for um, funding that would help defray any kind of increased expenditures we have because of COVID, so I know that Christopher and Nikki are both keeping an eagle eye on um, grant funding opportunities, so I just wanted to point out this one is, you know, I'm sure we'll hear how it fares as it goes through the sausage-making process. Um, that's one. Um, on page forty-one, you'll be glad to know that you can like each other on Facebook now without violating the Brown Act. Um, so, um, it's, it, it's not passed, I guess, yet, but um, there was a concern, you know, as, as, as uh, older legislation, like the Brown Act meets newer things like social media, you know, what's legal and what's not, um, and it's, you know, I think there was a concern that it doesn't seem fair for public officials to not be able to participate in social media, since that's such an, such an important um, source of information. But they're just clarifying the, the, the parameters, which means you can't discuss stuff, you can't reply to each other on social media, but you can like stuff, so, just FYI, um.
You won't be so lonely anymore.
There you go.
It hasn't passed yet. Don't go liking any Facebook pace.
Yeah. Um, I was trying, I'm, I'm skipping a page and going to page forty-three now, and I'm trying to make sense, and I can't say that I did make a whole lot of sense of the workers' comp kind of stuff. Jason, maybe this is something you might have a little more insight to. Uh, you know, I guess, I guess everywhere in the working world, um, people are trying to figure out how COVID affects benefits and so on, and um, I gotta say, on first read, I I, I wasn't crazy about um, CSDA opposing this, or maybe there's something. Or maybe there's something about it that I don't understand, but it just seems like the CSDA position is sort of setting ourselves up to protect ourselves from our workers. And I'm not sure I like that position, you know.
Governors, what the governor's order did, and his order honestly was really geared towards healthcare workers. Is it, it basically, all workers' comp claims related to COVID were automatically approved. Um, that expired, um, so it currently is not in place anymore. Um, you know, I don't know what the impact would be on us as a library district, uh, so much. But, you know, considering that there is a large number of healthcare special districts that operate hospitals in the state.
Sure.
Um, you know, that, and I think that's kind of, I've seen that in the past with the CSDA is they take very general uh, approaches to legislation because it affects one particular group within special districts and maybe a big deal for others out of, you know.
Well, again, trying to just parse this out for myself in it, on this page forty-three, SB eleven fifty-nine, part one, the, the rebuttable assumption that employees who, that worked outside their home at the direction of their employers, if they get sick, that they got sick from employment and are eligible for workers' comp. I mean, you know, our employees are working outside their homes and, you know, I know, I presume you would have heard if anybody had gotten sick yet and that, that nobody has. But, you know, if, if, if our employees are at work and they get sick from COVID and there's any chance that it happened because they were at work, I think workers' comp should be, um, engaged. So I don't know. We'll, we'll keep an eye on this, I guess. And, and I, I guess it makes sense that it really is not so much directed at our, um, port, you know, our, our piece of the special district world, um, but it could just kind of puzzle me.
Um, well, and I think I, just if I could jump in for a second here, Betsy, my understanding is that the executive order in this bill specifically only encompassed that period of time from March nineteenth to July fifth.
Ah.
So, like, I don't, I don't have any claim to understand what the larger workers' comp situation is. But I know that, at least for us, um, we haven't, to date, I think, Nikki, if this is correct, we haven't had anybody who's gotten sick or tested positive. And we've been really, I think, probably overly cautious about having people stay home if they're symptomatic at all until they have a negative test to make sure that people are, are safe and staying out of the workplaces. That's right, isn't it?
Yeah, we have everybody fill out a health declaration form every morning before they start their shift, whether it's in the building or work at home. Um, that makes them, let us know if they have any symptoms, as well as if they've been around anyone in the last forty-eight hours that was diagnosed or showing symptoms. And then on top of it, like, the closest I think we've had any staff are, they've been around someone who had been around someone else. And in that case, like, they got, everybody got tested. So no, nobody's been sick so far. And we're really, really pushing, like, if you don't feel good, stay home, like.
Mm-hmm.
It's not worth it.
Um, the other piece in this Take Action Brief that, that's of interest to us on page forty-five is, um, just a, an update in the Santa Monica, City of Santa Monica case in which, um, they, uh, apparently won a round, uh, in their, in their, um, conflict about whether they should change their at-large voting system. They were, were, um, in litigation over that. And apparently, they demonstrated that their at-large system is fair and inclusive. So, um, you know, I don't think that necess- it all necessarily changed, changes our course. But it's just interesting, it's that, um, it seems like so far, the picture that we've gotten is that it's very hard to win this kind of a fight. And they did. So, good to know. Um, I don't know if you know anything more about that, Katie, that it would be good for us to hear, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's interesting. And when I got to this page, my eyebrows, like, crawled up through my scalp and hit the ceiling. Um, I mean, this is, I, I'm not a lawyer and this is my opinion, right? So I will preface that by saying I have not talked to anybody. I don't know any, I, I know what I've read and what I've read in some of the coverage. But basically, um, yeah, I mean, City of Santa Monica is arguing that basically CVRA in, in the state of California says that by definition, at-large voting imposes unfair burdens, basically, on, on minorities, that it makes it just structurally very difficult for them to get elected to, for things to be fair. So it's inherently sort of a, like a structurally problematic system. The City of Santa Monica has been arguing from the jump that that's not true. And what they like to do is point to the fact that there are candidates who are preferred by Latinx voters who win. I think that it is very important to point out that they are not necessarily Latinx candidates, right? What they're saying is that, and it gets into like block voting and all of this stuff. The City of Santa Monica is saying that there's basically an equivalency between candidates preferred by communities of color and equal representation for communities of color, which I think is real shady. Cause ballots are, like, it's not multiple choice. You can't be like, well, I would have voted for this person, but they didn't even run because the barriers to entry were so high and it was so expensive that it was inherently unfair. So I voted for this white guy and so therefore it's not like an unfair system. So I thi- I, like, I think it's kind of a bogus argument, but it's what they're making. Um, CSDA and the League of California Cities have filed an amicus brief in support of the City of Santa Monica, which again, I think is not awesome at all. And I think they are on the wrong side of this. Again, my opinion, and I'm just on my little soapbox here. Um, but I think that the rationale is, like, I would guess, not having read their amicus brief, that they, that the rationale is that the burden on cities and municipalities is too high. And if their argument is, like, the remedy is uncool, that you have to, like, redistrict within ninety days, that, I think, has some merit because it would be very difficult, especially in situations like we have right now, which they've actually suspended redistricting efforts, to, to conduct a fair and equitable and really inclusive process to draw good districts. So, you know, I, I don't know. It, I mean, the Court of Appeals reversed the decision. So I think that CVRA is gonna be upheld. I think in the long term, we're gonna end up on the right side of this issue. Um, and they're saying that basically the, the argument from the City of Santa Monica is, is kind of bogus and not really representative. Um, so, you know, we'll continue to monitor. I think that our position, again, to be on the side of a more fair, more equitable and more inclusive and accessible system will never be the wrong choice. Um, and so I'm, I'm glad that that's what we've elected to do. Um, but certainly, you know, I, I don't know, man, the amount of taxpayer dollars being spent by the City of Santa Monica to defend this position blows my mind.
Yeah, I guess the only other thing I'd say, looking ahead to our own future of having, uh, district elections instead of at-large is, is, um, you know, we have three seats right now and two people running. And, you know, the, the, if, let's think about that. If we had three separate seats in three separate districts, we'd be having to not only get, find anybody who wanted to run, but we'd have to be finding people that live in the right part of town to be able to run for those district seat. I think, I, I guess my point is, uh, the challenge to, go back to your comment about, about our, the burden of recruitment being on the board is gonna be even bigger later. But, and that's, you know, that's all good. I think, I think the, um, the reasons are good, the outcome will be good. It's just that the work will be bigger.
No, I to- I totally agree. That's absolutely correct, right? Because instead of just, you know, if we've got three seats up, we need at least four people basically to run, to contest it. If we've got three seats, we need, you know, a multiplier. We need at least six, basically. Otherwise, we're just appointing. Which, you know, listen, I, I agree, it's a higher, it's a higher standard of effort. But I also think, you know, this is, I say with some trepidation, the first year or the first cycle, I think we've, as a district, made a concerted effort at recruitment period. So I have a feeling that we will get better and more effective and our reach will broaden over time as we continue to do that.
Yeah. Well, apparently what we need is a lot of conflict. So maybe, maybe to just get some more conflict and more people will want, wanna run. That's what happens.
We need a lot of people like Camila. That's what we need. We need people to step up and be like, yeah, I can make this better.
Yeah, cool. Um, so lastly, just briefly on page forty-eight, I just happened to find this on the LA site that there is, uh, federal, um, funding that's, um, or, that's being proposed and, and legislation is being written about it. Uh, that I will, I mean, I think, I think I could say pretty safely that we would all su- support this and that, um, there is a way to submit letters through the LA website, which I will just, as an, as an informational email, or maybe I'll send it to Nikki and she can send it out to y'all if you want to, uh, make your voice heard about, um, being in support of legislation that would support the stabilization of, of libraries due to COVID on a federal level. That's what, that's what this is. So, that's it for me.
Thank you so much. All right, other liaison reports for either our liaisons to the Friends or the Foundation. Jason, Terry, anything from you guys?
I think the, uh, I think the Foundation and Bridget covered it pretty well. Nothing to add.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, I'll be interested to see the Friends, have a good Friends meeting coming up to, you know, they just had a change in leadership there with Claire leaving and so on. So, um, there's a lot going on there. We'll know more at the next meeting.
Okay, very cool. Thank you. Um, and now finally trustee reports. Anybody like to start on that? Um, Terry, I know you've got a report that you've included in the package. So would you like to start?
Yeah, and that, and this actually dovetails into a lot of what has been discussed tonight. Um, my report was simply to give you a brief update on how the, um, how the election might go. And my, my hope was, along with everybody else, that there'd be some more candidates and that we could actually have a, someone on the ballot and, uh, you know, an election that had a little interest to it. But there's just the two of us, Camila and me, that have, uh, done this. And now, I, I don't know what the process is going forward. I think Natalia and Nikki will take care of some of the paperwork about getting us unstated and so on. But, uh, it was, you know, a little bit disappointing. And it wasn't for lack of effort because I know everybody tried hard. You know, you, Kennedy and Jason put together a terrific presentation. I watched that on, you know, what to do if you want to run for office. We had the signage everywhere and so on. But, um, this does open up some interesting issues. One of which, um, uh, hit me when I was reading our new board policies and procedures. And it, and my head was spinning a little bit about what happens now with, uh, two, uh, basically appointees, right? Or, and another one coming. Uh, I shouldn't say two appointees because, um, Camila and I are already in the driver's seat in terms of the, um, you know, being on the board. So that'll extend going forward. But when we appoint someone else, there was language in there about the, them having to go through the next election, the closest election. And I'm not sure I understood all that. And the reason that's of concern is that when you look back at some of the election fees we paid, I've got a two or three years' worth, a two, three election cycles of this, they're expensive. You know, anywhere from, you know, the high five figures to the low six figures for each election that we get billed for these services. Uh, another thing that I'm not quite sure of, and something that we might take, wanna take a look at, is if we do the district elections, how does that impact the fees that we pay for electoral services from the county? I think it's likely to go up because there might be more ballot printing or, or something going on there. So there is a, a cost, uh, that is a little undetermined to me that might occur when we, uh, appoint someone for a full term coming up. That person might, from my reading, and I might be wrong about this, might have to go through some sort of an election, the, the closest election with the county coming up. So there's some, some work to be done there to figure out what the impact might be for us.
So just a quick response, if I may, on that, um, because I agree with you that that section of the board policies is like totally incomprehensible. And I will say that I spent, when we were rewriting it, many hours on the phone with council, trying to figure out what it actually means. It's the same thing that happened to you and Betsy when you guys were appointed. So basically, it means that somebody gets appointed in December, right? And then they have to run for their unexpired term at the next regular election, which would be the midterm. So in twenty-twenty-two, whoever that is, would run for their unexpired term seat for those remaining two years. Does that make sense?
It does. I think the thing that threw me is that if there was references in there, it had to be within a hundred and thirty days or something. So that made me think that, okay, maybe it has to be in the March election or the June.
No, it's, it's confusing because it's about the, the hundred and thirty days from, like, the, basically what it's saying is, if they're trying to make sure that you don't, like, appoint somebody and then there's an election the next week and you're depriving voters of the chance to, to actually make a decision. So it's the next, it's, it's with, like, when, it's, it's when in the term you're appointed that sets the clock. So if you're appointed, like, towards the end, then you just stay on and that's, that's fine. So like, Camila, for example, was appointed and there was an election that was less than a hundred and thirty days away. So she would normally, had there been a sufficient number of candidates, have had to run for that seat. Does that make sense? Now, it was up anyway, so this is a terrible example, but had it not been, you know, it would have been the case that she would have had to run for an unexpired term appointment, which is, like I said, the same thing that happened to you and Betsy when you guys were appointed in the spring of, um, twenty-eighteen. So we shouldn't, I mean, funding, like, changes from LA County Register, which can always happen, sorry. Um, we shouldn't see any change, substantial change in our election cost from what it has been in the sense that every two years, we have the cost of a trustee election. Um, and that cost, I believe, has sta- and Natalia or Nikki, I know you guys were looking into this and we talked about it. That cost has remained fairly consistent. Like, it's gone up, but not to the extent that one would anticipate things going up. Isn't that right? Am I remembering that correctly?
Well, I've got, I've got the papers that talk about the fees we paid for our last several elections, and it might be incomplete, but they, they vary widely, actually.
Um, well, it depends on how much stuff gets printed, right? So like, depending on, on how many ballots get printed. So because in prior elections, they weren't on the general cycle, the number of sample ballots and number of actual ballots that had to get printed and go out to people was so much lower.
Right.
Right? And then when we switch to the, um, when we switch to the presidential, it's a totally different deal.
Well, I do think it's probably a good what-if question for us right now, even though the next, you know, like, election is two years away. Let's assume that we plan for and are successful there, uh, you know, going down the path of having these district elections instead of the at-large elections. I think if there's now four or five districts that are up for election within the, within the district, what does that do to our, um, uh, you know, fees from the county for running the election? Because to me, they were sort of shockingly high. I gotta tell you, I always, I always thought that maybe seventy thousand dollars or something like that was what we were paying for these. But it's actually much more than that. So that could have a future effect, just, you know, for planning purposes. I think it's worth as- asking that question. Um, but anyway, that, my report was really all about, a simple report about, well, there was only two of us and everybody did a good job. But isn't it disappointing that we only got, you know, just the two of us? We should have had more. And what could we do better next time? But it morphed into these other things about costs and about the question that you answered. Do we have to have paper and extra election going forward? Or it doesn't look like you have to do that? So, anyway, there you go. That's my report.
Well, and I think, I think those are all really important. Sorry, Betsy, go ahead. You had a question.
I'm just trying to picture how this works. So, so, so Terry and Camila get appointed as, appointed incumbents in twenty-twenty. Uh, but then they have to declare that they're gonna run again in twenty-twenty-two? Or are they, are they good till twenty-twenty-four?
They're, so because they filed, they are handled differently than somebody who's a vacancy appointment.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense? So if there had been three people who had filed, like Terry and Camila and, you know, John Smith, if all three of them had filed, all three would be appointed for the full term.
Okay, so we're just talking about.
Uncontested election. So it's only the person who's gonna replace you, Betsy.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, cause then that's a vacancy appointment and that's handled differently than an, an appointed election. I forget what their terminology is, but basically, like, yeah.
Why is it a vacancy appointment when I'm running out my term? I'm not resigning. And my seat is vacant because the, because my term expired and nobody ran for it. Is that, is that the same as if I had, like, like, when, re- re- resigning?
I, that is a great question for our friends at BB. I don't know, we, we're quickly approaching the limits of my election knowledge, um, on law. But I, I, all I, all I know- on law, but I I all I all I know is that like all this stuff is spelled out for us in our establishing act and in the election code, and we have very little like basically no flexibility in how we carry it out. So this is something that is sort of is sort of handled. And I will say also, this is gonna be weird, like whoever is appointed to fill your seat, Betsy, it's gonna be weird because when we redistrict, that may impact the sequence of elections, right? Because the way the districts are drawn and the people who are in the seats may not match. And so one of the processes that you go through in redistricting is you figure out how to have minimal impact on the sequence of elections, because you don't want, like, for example, you want to keep your three-two alternating every two years process happening. And so in order to do that, sometimes what that means is terms get extended. They almost never get shortened. Like, that's not a thing, because you've been elected by by voters. But they sometimes will get extended or rearranged or things will switch around. So I think like, it's really difficult to know how the person who is appointed in December, they will certainly serve at least two years. At that point, they may need to file to run for an unexpired term. They may have their term extended. I don't know, because we won't know where they live. We won't know how that impacts the district. So like, basically, a lot of stuff is gonna be figured out through our districting process. And I think, you know, we're gonna kind of, we're gonna play it by ear, honestly, which is like kind of an unsatisfying answer, but
Well, if I were Terry or Camila, the thing I would want to hear is, I'm good for four years? And you said yes.
Yes, you Terry and Camila, good for four years. You guys are good to go. And by the way, I will just say, not that this is my trustee report, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Thank you, Terry and Camila, both for stepping up and for filing and for being ready to run and do all the things you need to do, like I I think it's easy sometimes to focus on the like, isn't it disappointing? We didn't get more people. But at the same time, I am very heartened that we have both of you, because I think you're both fantastic representatives and we're really lucky to have you on this board. So thank you for being ready to go.
Well, that's very much. Thank you, Katie.
It's true. All right. Any other trustee reports from anybody? Betsy.
All right, doing a lot of talking. I just have one kind of fun thing to report, which is that I have volunteered to do research on Boyd Giorgi, the architect of our main library building in order to write an article for Altadena Heritage about him. And it's been so fun and so serendipitous. I was walking my dog at the Cobb Estate and I started to run into these same people with their two dogs. And by the third time I ran into them, we got to chatting. It turns out he used to be the finance director of the library. This guy, like, for thirty years. And and he had all kinds of ideas about people that I should talk to. And turns out that maybe some of you know that unfortunately for us, a thing that's happening tonight at Altadena Historical Society, which we can't attend because we're here, is about Pablo Miralles's film about Muir High School, which we had a screening of there at the library a while back. Turns out his dad was an architect and worked with Boyd Giorgi. And not only that, his dad was a library trustee. Adolfo Miralles was a library trustee for many years and lives like a couple blocks from me. And so I'm working on getting a chance to talk to him. I have found, I hope, one of Boyd Giorgi's sons, and I'm trying to get in contact with him to see if he might talk to me. I'm just really curious about this man who built this beautiful building. And I'm just trying to find out about him. So this is like heaven for a retired librarian to be able to do this kind of research. So I'm just excited to kind of let you know that that's happening and I'm and and I'm doing that. And I'll certainly share any stories that I find out. And I'm hoping that by seeing his story in Altadena Heritage Newsletter, that people in Altadena will have an even greater appreciation. Do, everybody appreciates the building, but it's always fun to hear the story of the person who built it. So that's what I'm up to.
Betsy, that's awesome.
You know, Betsy, I might have a lead for you on that, too. And that is that his house up in Altadena was purchased not too long ago, and it's in the process of being restored by a couple whose name I believe I can get. I haven't met them, but I know that's some way. So if I can make progress, I'll send you an email.
I appreciate that. I I I was also put in touch with somebody who lived down the street from him, whose older sister went to high school with his daughter. And who like ran in and out of his house when he was a little kid. And so it's just funny, the the connections that I'm kind of piecing together of, you know, Altadena of fifty years ago. I I happened to find out that he designed a famous house in Pasadena, which has also just been restored. And so another lead that I'm gonna track down is the architect who's done that restoration and see what she what she might be able to tell me. So it's a big giant treasure hunt and mystery to solve. And so, yeah, any any leads. Oh, by the way, you know, this is something I'll just say to the any public who might be watching or any of you guys who might hear, I would be really curious to talk to anybody in Altadena who remembers when the library opened. I mean, who was actually probably a little kid, or at least a young person in nineteen sixty-seven, when the library opened and just sort of what it felt like to have this giant, you know, beautiful new thing unveiled in the middle of our town. So if anybody knows of anybody like that, please let me know.
That'd be cool. That'd be really cool. Betsy, I hope you keep track of all these folks, because I know our good friends over at Altadena Historical might want to talk to some of them for some of the oral histories that they do as well.
For sure.
And I think that you've you're identifying some super good super good oral history subjects. Are you, just real quick, are you in touch with Steve Lamb yet? Have you talked to him? Because I had a conversation with him that was like a seminar on mid-century modern architecture and Boyd Giorgi. So let me put you in contact with him. And I think he will be exceedingly informative.
Thank you.
All right. Any other trustee reports? Okay, then that brings us to item seven, our new business. So Nikki, do you want to talk a little bit about the operational plan update? This is an information-only item, but let's get informed.
Yes, thank you so much. So as the board is aware, we brought the 2020 operational plan for approval back in January of 2020, where you guys approved the objectives that we set forth based on the strategic priorities that we identified in the oh, no, I'm not frozen yet, am I? Am I frozen? No? Okay.
No, you're good. You're good. No, I know. My my video decided that it was no longer needed.
So anyway, we we set up the operational plan based on the strategic priorities of we are curious, we are connectors, and we are neighbors. So we thought, and it's written actually into the master calendar that we bring you. In the past, I believe it was based on the fiscal year, so it was like an update of the of the plan and what was accomplished. But we're just doing like a mid-year check-in with you about that. So some of the accomplishments of note, and if and as you can see in the package, what Chloe and I did was reformat it to show like which objectives were have been taken care of already this year that we have accomplished. Then we edited the rest of it a little bit to like denote what was affected by COVID and our ability to be able to either change the objective to some extent, or, you know, basically not be able to do it, depending on what it was. And then in addition to that, as you can see in the document, the green are things that came out of our professional development day based on feedback from the staff that we wanted to make sure we integrated into the operational plan as an action item from the things that we heard that day. So some of the accomplishments of note that I just thought I'd point out were that we have now integrated work plans with all manager direct reports. So those are either bimonthly or quarterly meetings, depending on how often the employee works. But again, regular face-to-face meetings with staff. We completed the classification and compensation study this year and implemented all of the recommendations that they shared with us. We completed our work with ARG and the Architectural and Design Review, which has informed our strategy for attaining public funding and potentially being able to accomplish these capital projects that have been a long time coming. We inventoried the entire collection at both branches, which has made curbside even more streamlined, because nothing is showing up as missing or lost or has a status that's wrong. And the staff have noted that they go to the shelf and they find everything now. So that was a really exciting project to be able to tackle while we were closed to the public. Jonathan upgraded our HVAC remote control. So the staff, like as you guys saw from the video, he shared to climb up to the roof every time we need to make adjustments. Now it's we have digital control on computers or devices. We created the Altadena Connections to share important local and regional news with the community, especially at the beginning and throughout the pandemic and closure. And as you can see from all of the yellow highlights, we've had to make many adjustments to our plan because of our closure to the public. We'll definitely use those objectives as we develop next year's plan, which we plan to bring to the board in December. We want it to be approved ahead of the year, so it gives us a full twelve months to work on it. And I'm happy to answer any questions. So that's kind of the overview of where we're at right now.
Fantastic. Questions for Nikki on our updated operational plan? While people are taking a look, I'll just say that, as always, I am constantly impressed with the pivot that staff have made to be able to not just continue operating, but to think of new and creative ways to reach out to the community that I know. And I know some of those are gonna remain, you know, post-pandemic, right? Because they're really effective and they're working for people. So I think that's terrific. Jason, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I I think it's just kind of perfect that this is coming up at this meeting, like it you know, there's just been a lot of kind of questions and discussion in the community about you know, there was already a lot of talk about, you know, what's a modern library look like? And and like, now that's just just evolved into what does a library look like in the time of COVID, right? You know, as sad as we all are about it, this isn't going away anytime soon, unfortunately. And I just want to applaud Nikki's leadership and her entire team for leading us through this, because for for our little libraries and our limited budget, I I think it's absolutely amazing the work that's been created. You know, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting that, you know, we moved all of this so quickly. And then I see on the news a couple weeks ago that the Orange County Library System with its massive resources is trying to brag about finally starting curbside pickup. And I'm just like, really? Like, we've been doing this for weeks. Like, what's the big deal, right? I just think it's great. It's perfect timing to just how much we're thinking ahead and and planning for all this.
And you just made me think of something, Jason. I I did one-on-one meetings with all of the staff. I did that back when I first came on board in December. Last week, I pretty much met with, I think it was about twenty people, because the other ten are reporting to me right now directly, but I can't tell you how many staff wanted me to express their thanks to the board as well for supporting them through the closure and continuing to pay them. And I mean, like, things were stressful enough for everybody, but knowing that they still have their job and they still have their income, like, everybody is very, very grateful. So I'm glad I thought of mentioning that, because I heard it over and over again.
I I think, you know, we are, we probably don't say it enough, but we are so grateful to all of our staff and all the fantastic people who work at our library. And I know that your leadership and also the the culture of the staff is one that is very much focused on people first. And I think we've had a, we've had an opportunity to really, you know, stand by that and see what that means in real life. And I'm I'm excited that not only does everybody have their job, everybody gets paid, everybody is okay, nobody got sick, like the important things, you know, it's sort of bottom of the Maslow's hierarchy, but we're doing incredible things. And I I love all the inventive, I mean, even down to coming up with a digital docu-series for Christmas Tree Lane Centennial and figuring out how to partner in new and exciting ways, because I think one thing that is becoming clear in a lot of our partnerships through the community is what an amazing resource the library is on the IT side, on the production side, ways in which we are able to create and generate into so many content that just like is unparalleled in our community. And that's such a huge asset.
Yeah, Nikki, I really like your very, the very top, your emphasis on staff empowerment, because my hunch is that that is something they may not have gotten, you know, in in past administrations. So thank you very much for that. I think that really gets people's creative juices flowing and it really helps to build the momentum that you need from a from a crew that's all focused on the same goal. So thanks very much for paying attention to that.
Betsy, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, one thing that's sort of puzzling to me in reading information about what's happening in the library world in general is 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 so much talk about furloughs. I mean, I get it, you know, we're we're not a giant county, you know, system or even a giant municipal system. But when I look at this pages and pages, it's like, why would we furlough you? You guys are like, you're working too hard, you know, slow down. Slow down a little bit. I mean, it's just, it it's just astonishing to me that in hard times, such creativity and productivity has been unleashed. And I I don't know, I guess that's the silver lining. I mean, you know, probably couldn't have done a whole lot of this stuff if you'd been open to patrons, because you would have been helping, you know, you'd been doing the regular job of being an open library. But I just feel like you know, I I kind of learned this early on in the COVID pandemic is that it's okay to feel good about the positive stuff, you know? I mean, it's terrible. It's it's it's, you know, it's terrible, but some really amazing good work has come out of this library staff because of having this opening of time and 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 you know, what they say, necessity is the mother of invention. Everybody's just trying to figure out how to solve problems. And again, I I also would like to just give a shout out to Nikki. I just feel like this doesn't happen without excellent leadership. And so I'm grateful.
Well, I mean, I walked into managing management team and staff, so. And and again, like, the thing I hear over and over, like, one of the questions I asked the staff was, what is one of your greatest takeaways about living through this? Is like, how much they miss the patrons and they can't wait until we can have people coming back into the building. And they're they are getting their needs satisfied a little bit through curbside. You know, there's very safe social distancing, but like the phone calls and the connecting with the community. Like, I've never had a staff that wants to do outreach and interact with patrons as much as the staff in Altadena, which is really wonderful.
Absolutely. Well, and I, one of my thoughts is I read through this operational plan and all the goals that have been achieved and all the revised goals that are in processes. You know, sometimes I hear some understandable, right? Because people love being in our library. I love being in our library. I'm sad we can't be in the building right now. But I'll hear some some complaining about, well, the libraries are closed and who knows if they're ever even gonna reopen. And I'm like, they are open, my friends. Like, there, this is an open, vibrant, healthy library system. We're figuring out what that means right now in a way where everybody can stay that way, but we are open for business. Okay. Any other questions? Nikki, anything else you want to share with us on this? Thank you for revising the operational plan. I think it's really important. And I I'm pleased that so many of our principles and our you know, larger goals translated so well, which I think speaks to the validity and importance of those goals, right? That they were, they were the right direction in the first place, so we just adjust the trajectory.
Management team that like, not not that like this list of accomplishments is what motivates us, but really like keeping our eye on the prize of what those are and how we keep those things moving. You know, we refer back to this operational plan in every evaluation we write. You know, it's really front of mind to make sure that we're keeping the promises that we made to the community through the strategic planning efforts.
I love that. Love it. All right. So then let's move on to item seven B, which is the revised director's annual evaluation form. And I'm gonna hand it to, I think, the the three of you, to Nikki and and Betsy and Terry as well, because I know that this has been a team effort. So if you guys want to talk a little bit about what this involves and and how we got where we got.
Do you want to take it, Betsy?
But I think I I think I teed it up earlier in the meeting, so I'm gonna unless there are any any questions about what I've already said, I think I'm gonna let you go ahead and give us the background and maybe run us through the form.
So when I started, it was written into, I think, my contract even, that we would be doing that we would be doing regular evaluations, at least in the beginning, like three and six a, a year. So Terry and Betsy and I sat down almost immediately and set forth like what we were going to do for those first three months. Uh, we built from the three and six month form that we already had in existence to create what we used for the district director form. But I think Terry, Betsy and I all agreed that the annual form really needed to identify specific competencies and not using the form that we use for the staff in general, but like more of that higher level district director slash executive type of evaluation. So we went back and forth a bit and ended up agreeing on the categories that are on the form, which are in the board package, starting on page 58, which include job knowledge, communication, execution and results, engagement slash influence, leadership and strategic perspective, initiative and innovation, um, and executive presence and approachability, each of which has, um, bullet points describing what that means. And then what, so what will happen is come, it's just over two months from now, if you guys can believe that already. Um, the, the board members will be given this, and I'm assuming Betsy will work with the attorney to compile it again. But, um, each board member will, um, be able to rate me on all of those things as well as offer commentary. So that's basically the background and I appreciate Betsy and Terry's work with me on it. It was, it was a large feat to tackle, but I think it's a good form.
Can I just say, I don't, I, oh yeah, just to point out what, what Nikki had said in the body of her, of her narrative report is that, um, the Coffin Associates folks were helpful in giving us a, a city manager position form, um, that just needed to be customized, you know, for a library context and, um, for a district, you know, for a district kind of context. So, um, I guess, I guess what we're asking, and I'm just presuming everybody has had a chance to review this as you reviewed your whole packet before the meeting. If you can, you know, let us know if you feel like those categories make sense to you, uh, if there are any that you think are missing or any that you think are super, superfluous, um, as well as the descriptions that follow, um, you know, if those, those work for you. And I guess, I mean, I guess we can also say that, um, we, you know, we can test drive it in November. And if, in a, you know, something we didn't notice now seems like it would be better phrased some other way or, you know, anything's missing, we can always fix it later. So it's not like this is written in stone. Um, but I guess our, our hope is that, um, is that, you know, you'll let us know if there's anything you, you do think needs changing now, but that we just go ahead and, uh, finalize it so that Nikki will know with at least a couple of months of, um, uh, lead, lead time, what process she's going to be going through in November.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll sort of start and then I'd, you know, love to hear everybody's thoughts. I, I think it makes sense. I think it works. I think the categories are good. Um, you know, one of the things that's been a little bit confusing in the past is just like whi- which bits we fill out and which bits we don't, to be perfectly honest with you, like I've messed it up multiple times. So one request that I do have is when we send this out to everybody, if we can just like highlight the sections where we need to reply, so we don't accidentally write in the parts that are for other people, but we do fill out all the parts that weren't, were meant to fill out. I think that that would be very helpful. And I'm sure once we've done it a couple of times, then we'll all be pros and we'll get it. But I, I will say that I would, I would request that assistance. Um, but I think it makes sense. I like that we have comments on each category and then overall comments. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, so I, yeah, just with that, with that one little caveat of basically the electronic version of flags that go like, do this part here, sign here. Other feedback, um, from anybody on the form? Our action item tonight is to, um, approve and adopt this form, but we can certainly do that with any amendments that we need to make. So if there are changes, we can certainly, we can integrate those with no problem.
I just wanted to point out on page, uh, 63 of the packet, which, um, which is, comes at the end of each individual board member's, um, overall comments. As in the three and six month forms that we use in the past, this form also provides a spot for us to, in the process of the evalu- evaluation, discuss and, and agree upon mutually, uh, the goals that, that we would want the director to be focusing on for the following 12 months. So that's, that's part of the package as well, just so you don't miss that.
Oh wait, question. Is that something that we would do individually? Like I'd list my five goals and you'd list your five goals and then we'd come up with a joint list? Or is that something we would do at the evaluation as a team?
My vision was the latter. I do believe that's how we have done it in the three and the six month. Is, is that in the closed session part of the evaluation process that we do together? That that's a discussion the entire board has along with the director and that, that, and those, that, that those are mutually agreed upon goals.
Okay, great. So that would, that's, this is why highlighting things would be helpful. Cause if it's not highlighted, I won't fill it in. If it is, I'll, I'll forget by then and I'll write some goals and nobody will want to know what that is.
Put a big skull and crossbones.
Don't do this. Not for you. Don't do it. No, I think that, I think that's right, because I think what we've seen is that it sort of emerges organically. I do, I do wonder, I mean, in the, now that we're sort of talking about this out loud, um, we have the, in the three and six months, we've had that list of specific goals, like a little chart in each section. And it's like, this was the goal, this is what I did. Will we? It would just be helpful to have that as a reference, I guess. You know what I mean? Cause I mean, we can always go and dig it up, but like having a copy of when we do get to the annual evaluation, to have a copy of, I guess, the six month, which is collated the three and the six together, would be quite helpful so that there are specific, you know, sort of articulations of each of those. Yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure, Nikki, isn't that the thing that you said, should I incorporate that? It will make the form really long. Yeah, and I said, we could put it as an addendum.
Yeah, we were thinking that maybe we would just have like, I'll take what was identified as the, cause we've already done three and six, so you guys set goals for the last six months of the year. Um, I could just comment on those and she could shen- send that to you as, and you could use that as you're filling it out. If that's, I mean, we could include it, but that, that will make this form extremely long.
No, 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 no. I think as an addendum is fine. I just would love to have it as a reference, because I know it was compiled and like, I didn't, I had my version, but I didn't have the final version that had everybody's comments together. So seeing a copy of that would be very helpful. Um, and then I'm wondering if it also makes sense, I'm sorry Nikki, to like think of something that involves more work for you. But I wonder if it makes sense to come into this process with, like, will you have like a little report that you write? Or, you know what I mean? Cause I'm, I'm just wondering if there's like a summary or if you'll have a set of goals for the following 12 months. It just seems like there's a lot of kind of specific stuff that it would be helpful to have people know. And I'm thinking especially like, what if we had somebody who had just been appointed and didn't, you know, hadn't been like following along at home? Like they would need that sort of backstory. Does that make sense?
Well, I almost feel like what we'd have to do then, Betsy, is simply because we're not going to keep doing the three and the six month, you know, is maybe create a form that's used for that purpose. So that like at the, like before, um, the evaluation gets sent out to the board, we already have this form that shows what was agreed to the year before. The director fills in and comments and then any additional comments. And then I could potentially create an area that has like ideas I have for goals. So that when, when you, we all sit down together, you have that. But ultimately we all agree during the evaluation itself.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that'd be, I, that'd be easy for me to put together.
I, I think I saw Camila's hand up earlier, so I don't.
I did too. Yeah. Camila, did you have a comment or a question? Okay, all right.
So, so maybe what that means is that if everybody's okay with this as it stands now, we can approve this now. And then maybe Nikki, you can bring back or maybe run by me and Terry if you want feedback on before the next meeting. Some draft of, um, I don't know what you would call, and I, I don't want it to be onerous. I mean, I don't want you to like tell us everything you did in the last 12 months. Um, but you know, some, some summary in, informational benchmark to use to, to jump, a jumping off point for us to.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'll cut and paste that next six month's goals. And, and then we'll make it so that it like makes sense for the yearly. And then I'll add another box for the next ones. It, it won't be hard. No, I, I can picture what it, it'll look like.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think that that makes a bunch of sense. And so this would be, basically this would be the board part of the evaluation. And then next month, Nikki, you'll bring us basically the, your part, like the, your generated part of the evaluation. Okay. Other, other comments or questions or feedback on this form as it stands?
Uh, yeah, I had, just real quick to, um, your point Katie earlier.
Please.
I, I do think that, um, I do think this runs on at the end because we've got multiple, uh, inputs for board member comments and rating. It looks like, you know, what do you do with that? So my, you know, the way I envision this is that you would get these first few pages with the categories that we talked about. And then it would be one comment, you know, board comment and rating pain, if you will, or, or a piece that each board member would fill out. So there wouldn't be a bunch of these things that are key under the deal here. And I think the signatures also would probably need to be collected individually, right? Because we're not going to have, you know, pass around a signature page for everybody to deal with. So those are the couple of things that jumped out at me. And then the other thing is that, um, I, I'm not sure we, we've kind of finalized what the cadence of review would be after this. I know, I think it was in the contract, in Nikki's contract, that there would be these multiple reviews in the first year. But now we're down to one a year, two a year? I'm not quite sure what the, what the amount should be going forward.
I'm quite sure it's once a year, but I don't know if that's in our bylaws or if it's in our personnel policies or if it's just in Nikki's contract, but once a year.
One, once a year is required by the bylaws, but it also says that, you know, at minimum, once a year. So there's no prohibition. I mean, we could certainly continue doing a quarterly conversation. Or, I mean, my, my suspicion is that probably a semi-annual one makes sense. It's like a check-in around six months, just to sort of say like, how's it going? Where are we? How is everything feeling? I don't know that there needs to even be a formal evaluation form, like that could be an informal process. Um, and then a formal written evaluation once a year is specified.
So maybe something like a goal report or something in six months. But the formal stuff that we go through, which is, you know, a big deal, you have lawyers involved and stuff, would be annually. And that's what I thought too, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page about that.
Yep, that's.
But the form itself would be just one pain for board comments and rating. There'd be one person filling this out. And then the, um, I mean, that's my vision of it. Am I, am I missing something?
So, so I guess, let me, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, Terry. So after page, well, what's in our packet is page 60, after we finish the last category, in the packet that each of us get to prepare for the November uh, closed session, there'll be, there'll be one blank page and we'll each have the same blank page. And then each of those blank, rather than having five sections scattered over several pages, our, e- each of our separate blank pages of overall comments would then be collated into the final report. And then, and then maybe a separate page for the goals and objectives. So that's not tacked on to the end of the comments. And then, I'm not sure why we have to have the boards sign, the members sign twice.
Well then, okay, now I have a question then. So like, what about our, is there a cumulative agreement at some point on what the like takeaway rating is? Do we vote on that? Or like, because I was sort of imagining that we would each fill out the category, like in initiative and innovation. And we would rate like exemplary, exceed standards, meet standards, needs improvement, unable, whatever. And then that would get collated in the final articulation of this report. And it would have the rating like, you know, two people said exceed standards, three people said exempl- or two people said exemplary, one person said unable to rate. And then there would be a sequence of all the comments, like from each trustee, right? Cause I'm imagining like what the final version of this looks like, which I, I understand is different from the version we all fill out. But that's, that's correct, right? We don't have to vote on each section to come up with a single rating.
I, I never imagined that. No, I don't think we have on the other ones. But I see what you mean, the, the difference between the, the, the individual one that we each fill out and then the rolled up version, it, uh, isn't really accounted for in this form.
Right. But it's sort of, they're sort of both coexisting. Like I get it, like both of them are sort of expressed. So I, I think Terry's point is right, that we would each get the categories, we would do the categories, and then we would get a separate page where we have our overall comments, our overall performance. We sign and date, we list some goals, the end. And then presumably, once we all do this in closed session, then that last page where we all sign, basically like, yeah, we had a conversation, we all agree, this is what we're going to do. Then we sign it at the end as a way of saying like, yep, that's what we all.
Yeah.
Is that, that's, that was sort of my understanding. Is that right?
Yeah, that makes sense now that we've talked it through. Does that make sense to you, Nikki?
Yeah.
Terry, does that tally?
Otherwise you'd have to, um, like not rate, if you think about it, on those competencies.
Right, right. Which is like, why are we, why do we bother?
So I, I think it, it, what's, the important part is going to be putting it all together. So we'll just have to put BB and K. And that's where it's like, I, I wouldn't mind being evaluated twice a year, but it's a lot of work for like Betsy and then the attorney. But I, I agree. And I'll think about that year, semi-annual check-in as I create that form.
That's a great idea. Yeah.
That'll be built in. It's like, it's another column at six months and then a column at 12 months, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think an annual formal evaluation is totally sufficient. But I do, I mean, I think, you know, it's always good to check in. So, you know, it's some, some, uh, less formal, um, just update at the six month mark, I think would be good for everybody's sake.
Well, especially as you're establishing a protocol, you know, like, and I talk every week. So that's in the future, you never know what potential relationships could look like. Having it formalized is smart.
Yeah.
And also, so like having the director's report baked into the standard agenda for the board meetings is, I mean, it's not really part of the evaluation process, but I do think if any of the board members felt that there was a concern, like it would start to come up in that conversation as well, right? I think it'd be pretty obvious if one or more of us had significant concerns. And I think the form as is, like, you know, it does what it needs to do, right? It forces the conversation, um, and it is a tool that can be used if, if any of us do have significant concerns.
That's right. And, and I will just say, thank you Natalia for this. Natalia's just reminded me of the relevant section of our board policies. And, um, so the board shall undertake a formal evaluation of the director annually and may at their discretion undertake special evaluations ad needed. If such an evaluation is approved with a vote of the majority of the board. So that just means if we're, if we want to do it semi-annually in like April or May or whatever it is, the meeting beforehand, we have an action item that says, we'd like to have, you know, a special evaluation, informal conversation. We vote, we do it, that's it. Or, you know, whenever, right? It doesn't have to be semi-annual. It can be if, if we feel like it's needed. Cause I don't know, there's a global pandemic or something comes up.
So can I just, uh, can I just paraphrase in Katie with what my understanding is? So we would have a, an evaluation form, and I think the, the part that we've all agreed on here is pretty solid. It covers, you know, the most relevant things. That would end basically at page 60. That would end basically at page sixty-one of seventy-six, for each one of us. So we'd have, individual board members would get this packet, they would sign off on their old board, board comments and rating, and this would go into a central source, maybe somebody at BBNK. And all of these things would be collated or organized, if you will. And then we would have our in-session meeting for the evaluation itself, based on all of that input. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's pretty much what, what we have done, and it, you know, it's, it's, uh, kind of tedious and awkward and clumsy, especially since we can't actually physically get together and sign anything all at the same time for now. That's not forever, um, but I, you know, that's what happens when you have five bosses, I guess. It's just lots of coordination. But yeah, I think that's a pretty good description of, you know, of the mini versions of this that we've, that we've done so far.
Yeah. One, one request I would have, if it's possible, and I think that this is probably, this is not related to the form and amending it in any way, but just as we talk through this process with whoever is helping us at BBNK, it would be great to be able to see the collated report with everybody's comments before the actual closed session. Cause in the past, we've gotten into closed session and we've gotten them, and that has been kind of rough.
Um, I, I think, I think there's a reason why we have to do it that way, but we'll find out.
Well, if there is, then fine, so, alright.
I think it's Brown Act, I think we can't get information not in the context of a meeting, even if it's, even if it's personnel information, I think, but.
Okay, alright, well, fine, yeah, if it's a Brown Act thing and that constitutes like a deliberative process, then fair enough, I could understand that. Um, just from a sense of like being able to review and not spend the first like twenty minutes for us and Nikki reading, but, you know, whatever, it is what it is, like that's the nature of public agencies, so if we have to do it that way.
Another ridiculous way that the Brown Act makes life hard, but, you know.
Oh well, the upside's outweigh the, outweigh the inconvenience, but it is, yeah, okay, yeah, it, I, you know what, I'm sure you're right. Like now that I'm thinking about it, yeah.
Let's have a pop quiz.
Let's have a pop quiz on the Brown Act, everybody, like me on Facebook, um. Okay, so any additional discussion on the evaluation form before we go to a vote? Okay, cool, well then, if I could, I would ask for a motion to approve and adapt the annual evaluation form as it appears in our board package.
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, so motion's been made and seconded, any additional discussion or debate on this? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote, trustee Andrews. Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote from me, so that is unanimously approved. Thank you so much, Betsy, Terry and Nikki, for working so hard on figuring out this process. I know we had to, top people talk about like, don't reinvent the wheel, you guys had to invent the wheel. You were like, well, we need something around, it goes, and so thank you so much for sort of iterating this over the course of the year, cause I think we actually have a really pretty good system now, which is cool. Um, okay, so that brings us to section eight announcements. I know that we have, uh, some correspondence in our board package this month from our good friends at LaFCO. It looks like they need, uh, vote from us for a special district alternative representative. I will note for the record that what we have done in the past, and the reason that this is not an action item, is that we have, um, as, as in her role as government liaison empowered Betsy to vote for whoever she thinks is great. And, uh, it's, you know, a reason to change that tradition now. So, um, I think in the past, you know, we have not traditionally voted in a lot of the LaFCO elections, um, but we are, I think, trying to pay a little bit more attention to what they do and just be aware of it, so. That is, that is that piece, um.
So Katie, can I just say, what that means is I'm the one who gets to read all this stuff, and then come back to the September meeting and tell you what I decided?
It sure is.
Got it.
It sure is. Thanks, Betsy.
Being busy for your remaining time with us, Betsy.
I'm getting all the fun jobs.
You're getting all the fun jobs, no, this is true, that's true. Alright, um, and there's no additional, uh, correspondence, a lot of information about people who work for water districts. So future agenda items, I know we've talked about a couple of things, one being Nikki's, um, report evaluation piece that she'll bring back. The other thing that I wanted to flag for you guys is, um, a date conflict. So our regularly scheduled board meeting for the month of September falls on September, uh, twenty-eighth, which is, uh, during Yom Kippur, so that's, that's not awesome. So my proposition to you is that, so that certainly Betsy, but anybody else, just because it's a major holiday, we should not have a board meeting on Yom Kippur. So I would propose that we, um, cancel that regular meeting and call a special meeting where we do all exactly the same things we were gonna do anyway, on either, uh, September twenty-ninth, fourth, thirtieth. I can do that without a, without board action, like that's a, that's a reserve power for the chair, but I wanted to get a feel from you guys about dates, if that works, or if we need to look at other dates, cause I, I would like to make sure we can have everybody there. So Monday is the twenty-eighth, um, and so I'm asking about, uh, Tuesday or Wednesday, so either the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth.
I'm available either of those days.
Okay.
Yeah, same here.
You're good, Camila, okay, Jason's good, okay, perfect. Then just to do as little, well, let me check with Nikki and just see if there's any, um, if there's any stuff I don't know about from the staff side or any other conflicts, cause I know sometimes we do stuff with town council and various other groups, let me double check. So we'll go with one of those either Tuesday or Wednesday night, and I will, um, send out an email formally cancelling our September regular meeting. Fortunately, there are very few things we need to do that have to be done at regular meetings, like hiring the director, evaluating the director, some of those things, approving the budget. But for September, we've, we've checked and there's nothing that we can't do at a special meeting, so it won't represent any delay in business, um, and that's, that's good. And thank you, Betsy, for reminding us about that conflict. I certainly apologize that we didn't notice it, and we will certainly be more diligent about checking for holiday conflicts in the future. Okay, any other future agenda items that anybody would like to have on the agenda for September?
I would just revert back to my earlier suggestion that it's never too early to start this. With all of the dialogue that must be going back and forth between, you know, the, uh, county, the registrar of voters and all the other stuff, if we could just ask that what-if question, how would a district-wide election affect our bill going forward? You know, can you give some advice on that?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. We can do that, and we can do that as an information item, Terry?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, as always, if you think of something, just let me or Nikki know and we'll get, we'll get it on the agenda. Nikki, can you remind me or Natalia what our deadline will be for board reports and trustee reports for the September meeting? It shouldn't, it would be the fourteenth, am I right?
Um, I think the sixteenth, we usually ask for the day prior to publishing, we'll try to publish the twenty-first or twenty-second.
Okay, great, so sixteenth, round about there. You'll wanna have any committee reports, trustee reports, any other materials that you want included, um, submitted to Natalia, so we can get those in. Alright, guys, well that brings us to the end of our business for tonight, so unless there's anything else, um, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Who will adjourn?
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any opposition? Hearing none, I will go ahead and declare us adjourned at seven thirty-eight PM. Thank you guys so much, as always, so good to see everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, guys.